It being six o'clock, I call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. May 1st, 2019. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to fill out a speaker's card like this, I have several, for item three, and file it with the Secretary, Sherri Herbrook. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less unless we give you more time. Comments must be directed to the Commission, not the audience, not the staff. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the Chair. What power? Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Powers.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin absent and two vacancies.
And as soon as the ordinance takes effect, the two vac-- it has taken effect, okay. So there are no vacancies now. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Commissioner Powers, if you'd lead us.
Where do you begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to the public communications, just a couple of announcements. First of all, those that are familiar with the Planning Commission will notice that we have fewer members now. Commissioner Jagiello resigned from the Commission citing the press of business on Monday, I think it was, or maybe Tuesday. And I wanted to thank him personally for his work on the Commission. I understand it was six or seven years. And to compliment him on his knowledge of the construction industry, that's his business. I think we're going to struggle at times not having someone in the construction business on the Commission, but we are now a, both legally and de facto, a five-member Commission. But I did want to thank Commissioner Jagiello for that, and if others have things they want to say, we can do that as well.
Well, I'm going to also chide in and say that I will miss Commissioner Jagiello in his experience, not only as a general contractor, but also trained as an architect, and I will miss his input.
I would just like to say I appreciated Commissioner Jagiello's problem-solving abilities and his sensitivities to Ojai and the values that it represents. And I truly, we didn't, sometimes we didn't vote the same, but I totally respect him and his abilities, and I will miss him.
I just want to dittle what everyone else said, and his breadth of knowledge was something I always learned from, and it also, and oftentimes, made the meetings more efficient as well, because he knew what to cite, and he knew how to construct buildings, and he'll be missed.
Very good. Just one other quick announcement, I heard about this just this afternoon, and I do not have an hour or a venue yet on this, but I understand the Ventura County Transportation Commission and Caltrans are coming to Ojai, and they will have a meeting somewhere here in town on May 20th.
I want to correct, I gave you wrong information, it's May 10th.
May 10th?
Yes.
Thank you very much. May 10th, so save the date, that's a week from Friday. All right, let's move on to public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, unless it's an emergency, no action can be taken at this meeting. So I have two cards here on public communications, and so I beg your understanding that we may not respond a lot to what you have to say, but we value giving you the time to say it. The first card is from Oliver Ruble. Is that correct, sir?
Correct. Good evening. My name is Oliver Ruble. I'm not a resident yet of Ojai, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to quickly introduce myself, because I will be back next meeting, May 15, to present to you a hospitality project that's already in the making for quite a while for Ojai. And I just thought, since I'm here, you're already familiar with my face, and it's not a surprise when I'm back the 15th.
Very good.
Thank you.
You'll be back for the next meeting, you think?
Yes.
Oh, very good, okay. I see your address here, 1386 East Ojai Avenue.
That's where we currently, that's where we currently, temporarily reside with the family once we're here in town, yes.
Very good. Well, welcome to town.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking forward to hearing your presentation, and Luke will be looking forward to your application.
Exactly. Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Wirick.
Again, I'm not your liaison tonight, that's Mayor Protem tonight. I just wanted to state for the record, and just in this transition time, make it clear, and I've reviewed my statement with Mr. Summers, that the choice of Chair for this Council, this Commission is for a one-year term, but there is no implication or need to rotate. You are free to choose who you think is best for either, for one-year terms to Chair this Commission. So I did not want there to be any sense of custom or, you know, thought that there was some need for rotation. You are free to simply choose who you think is best for the next term of Chair.
So we're not doing it the way the City Council used to?
Yeah, that's also gone. So I just wanted to make that statement for the record in case there was any confusion, that there was any sense of custom or protocol. There is not. You are absolutely free to choose who you, whether rotate or not rotate, or six, there's no term limits, just whatever you think is the best in terms of running your Commission.
Thank you. I had a suggestion, I thought, quite timely and quite intelligent, that we move item three, the 408 North Montgomery Street discussion item, ahead of our discussion of the City of Ojai design guidelines. I see a number of people here that look like they're more interested in 408 North Montgomery than they are design guidelines, and so if there's no objection by my fellow Commissioners, I think we'll do that. But first, we have our consent item, and that is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from April 3rd. Did we have any suggested changes to those minutes? I didn't find any, but you never know.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from the April 3rd meeting, 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, Sherri?
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Very good. Approved. I see the March 20th, which we approved at the last meeting, I think. So I'll sign both of those for you. All right, then let's move on to the discussion item, 408 North Montgomery Street, Affordable Housing Conceptual Plan. Could we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I may need one minute here, we're just going to have some brief PowerPoint slides, I think makes it easier to talk through this proposal. So I guess to start off tonight, too, one thing I really want to emphasize is that what we're going to be looking at is a concept, capital C. There is no definite proposal, no application on file, no intent to seek approval to develop anything. This is really trying to get out on the front end of a concept of a site the city has owned for about nine years now. So this is the site we're talking about here, on the corner of Franklin and Montgomery. It's on the southeast corner. It's an undeveloped property, about 9,000 square feet, little under that. It's about a quarter mile north of Ojai Avenue. As I said, the city acquired this site in 2010. It originally had, prior to that, had four dwelling units on it, two duplexes. You have the neighborhood here, north on Franklin and east on Franklin, between oak of single-family homes. Franklin is a very narrow, essentially cul-de-sac street. You have a real mix of uses around this, though. You have commercial building to the south that formerly was a church, an actual church and parking lot across the street, two-story residential just south of that, a larger residential complex here, and a lot of commercial uses, especially as you get towards downtown. So, because the staff report says, this is a pretty eclectic, like downtown frame area with a real mix of uses here. So this is, again, a small site that the city has had for, going on a decade now, and was acquired with redevelopment funds. So, as I said, prior, this was, had a, four residential units on it until early 2010, when the city acquired it. City's acquisition was immediately transferred over to the Redevelopment Agency at that time, even though this site is not in what was formerly the redevelopment project area that Ojai had. Due to its acquisition with low and moderate income housing funds and a grant deed on the property, it's really targeted and restricted for affordable housing, in that sense. So that was always the intent, and you do have, again, that intent remains. In 2013, as part of the updating of the housing element for the city, this site was given an SPL overlay designation. It has an R2 zone. The SPL overlay does not replace R2, but it's just that. It's an overlay which allows you to have a greater density, in this case up to 20 units per acre of affordable housing, but it needs to be affordable, not just housing in general. Per the housing element, based on acreage and the 20-unit-per-acre density, this was identified as a site that would have, say, four units. In 2015, the redevelopment had been dissolved essentially in 2012. In 2015, the title of the property was transferred back to the city from the Redevelopment Agency, but still with the intent of this being an affordable housing site. There's really not a lot else, again, that you could do with it. So I'm just trying to go through this quickly. I think the staff report has a lot of details, and of course, we can get into questions. Again, this site has been long identified for affordable housing. A lot of the question now is, what's that going to look like? How does it integrate into the neighborhood? What should the total number of units be? The second bullet is something I don't think we can get into a lot. It has nothing to do with land use right now, but it is something to think about again, is like, is there really a target population in mind? People talk about things like residents, workers and residents. Some of this, I'm not sure the feasibility of it, because a lot of that can depend on where your financing may come from, with how you, can you even restrict housing? But I know this has been something that's talked about in terms of trying to best serve the existing population, particularly people who live and work in Ojai, or at least throughout the valley. I think the issues, as I touched on a little bit earlier, is with affordable housing here, and especially in a mixed area, you really want to think, how is this going to integrate into the surrounding area? Especially with it being a city project, it's a tight site, it's not large, and I think that's what we really want to flesh out upfront, are what are those issues? If you're going to do housing on this site, how does it best fit in? Supportable density number of units, as I said, the housing element identified this as a candidate for four units. I think they even used the term realistically only three. I'm not sure what that means, other than there could be issues with going up to four. As the staff report identified, though, with changes to state housing law, particularly related to density bonus, where you have affordable units, it's feasible to go beyond four. The proposal we'll look at tonight, and the concept has five, and it's feasible based on the site and maximum affordability to even go up to seven total units on this site. I think the main issue that's going to jump out for people, and particularly with Franklin being a narrow street, and Ojai not having had a lot of very dense projects like this, is parking. Affordable housing, there's always tension between parking driving up costs, making housing less affordable, and there's also that tension about having a walkable pedestrian-friendly community, which Ojai is, and which I'm frequently hearing people want to enhance and get more of that. So often, providing parking and designing around cars, you get more cars. So I think this is kind of butting into our code, which is very common in terms of more of an auto-centric code. For a five-unit project, you would have 12 parking spaces. What we're going to look at tonight has four, based on five units. And again, I want to emphasize, I'm sorry for the way the colors show up here, because they weren't actually drawn that way, and I'll have Nick Oatway, who designed this, and Bill Miley also speak on this, because they put more work into this project, I think, than anyone at this point. But, you know, again, this is your Montgomery Street and the corner there to Franklin. So the way this is designed is you would have no access. The buildings have more of a presence along Montgomery Street, but the vehicle access would be on Franklin. These units don't have individual parking spaces. These four would serve these units. And again, we have three units in this cluster, one unit here, one unit here over a community space. And I'll keep saying, this is a concept. We just have this drawn up, so it's something to start the conversation based on a five-unit project. By the floor plans. Elevations as well are conceptual. We took sort of two basic architectural styles you see a lot in Ojai. On the top, a craftsman style, and below, more of a mission revival style. Again, as I think Nick will say, he didn't intend that color to be quite so yellow. No one is proposing that it be either of these, but again, these being familiar styles, this is what the project could ultimately look like in terms of building elevations. This is a view from Franklin with the, this being the entryway to the parking here. This, the view on top would be from Montgomery Street.
That lower drawing there, the plan form shows a one-bedroom apartment on top of a shared community room, but that doesn't look like a two-story building there.
Actually, that would be set back further. This would be the side elevation of the building fronting Montgomery. The unit that would be tucked back.
The fifth unit is in behind that parking structure.
Right, if you were to drive straight back.
It's just not shown.
Right. It's not shown. Correct, correct. And I'll be handing this over to you in one minute. So, anyway, let me just get through these here, but yeah, again, like I said, the buildings really read from Montgomery Street, even though your auto access would not be from there. Again, this would be it with the mission revival style architecture, just pretend it's not quite so yellow. And that takes care of the slideshow. Again, I said it would be brief. I know there will be questions, and I would like to give Nick and Bill an opportunity to speak as well.
I guess for purposes of this item, they are quasi-staff.
Yes. Not quasi-public, but quasi-staff, yes, so.
So I do have just one question.
Sure.
So the ownership of the units will be city-owned? Do we have any idea of what that is, or is that to be worked out?
That's to be worked out. It's, right now, it is a city-owned site, I think in terms of the financing questions. If something were built, who would manage it? Would we partner? Where's the funding coming from?
Exactly.
Those are all balls in the air right now.
Okay.
Important questions, but I think that's why tonight, we know this is something that's going to have a big public vetting process, to start getting it going, focusing on designs, land use, and all that, and giving the community an opportunity to speak, so.
Any other questions of Mr. Connolly?
Sure.
Please.
Dare I ask what affordable is?
It can mean a lot of things. It can be very low, low or moderate income.
I saw that chart, but in terms of monthly rent, not income.
That's going to be tied to what your income is. So what maybe would be a good discussion in terms of what the preferences are for getting very low and low income versus moderate? Because I think, as you can see, Ventura County's median household income in 2018 was 96,000. So a lot of your affordability calculations are based on a family of four. Moderate income, which is often the easiest to target, allows 120% of median, so that's over 115,000 a year. It's not necessarily somebody that has a low income in a lay meaning. None of that has been targeted yet. I think that's the kind of thing you have to pencil out as you get into the financing. But all of those things are based on your income levels with who qualifies. But in terms of, like, if you are targeting a moderate-income household, it was in Ventura County, outside of Silicon Valley, this county has the highest household incomes in the state, higher than Santa Barbara, higher than Orange County. So moderate income is not necessarily low, like I said. And that may be some of the things, as we look at this, is if there is a desire to get to the very low and low income, to target units for that, how is that going to be feasible? But I don't know what the monthly rents would be for that income.
But the concept here is for five moderate-income units?
And I could probably let Bill speak more to that. I believe that's been the basis. I don't know that we couldn't go lower than that, and similarly with the density bonus, could we maximize and get a sixth or a seventh unit on that site? Because with the density bonus--
Have to build straight up and have no parking.
Or you keep the parking where it is, and obviously, the design would have to change if you add units to it. But again, this was sort of the, get the conversation going and get a design before you at this level.
It's a good time to get the conversation going.
Yes.
Kathy, it's some--
Yes, I do have a question. What, I'm trying to think of the way to pose this. What guidelines or what mandates does affordable housing fall into as far as, are they required to do, like, say, the M-Welo, or if there's some other energy efficiency and things like that? Are they required to comply with that? Or because of it's affordable housing and you're trying to make it economically viable, are they exempt from?
I don't know if they're exempt from things like that, but I think, like, one of the things I touched on in the staff report is essentially, the greater the affordability, the more exceptions from government regulation you can ask for.
Okay, so that's--
So this could have up to three, but that generally pertains more to city regulations. Parking's number one.
Okay.
Because generally, parking adds cost, and density drives down your parking ratio.
Right.
I mean, you're getting cities now capping parking the other way.
Yeah.
Instead of what's required, they're capping it as you can do no more than.
Right.
To make things get away from being auto-centric. I know there's discussion, too, we're looking at, I don't have the answer absolutely, is can we restrict people living here? Can we restrict their vehicle ownership?
Right.
So to literally, you cannot own a car to live here. And that's one way to make that work. Like I said, is what you're looking at tonight--
Doesn't sound very legal.
I think it's been done.
You know, I think there was just a project--
I think it has been done elsewhere.
In Santa Barbara, I believe, recently, I think I read that.
I don't have the details, but I think it is legally defensible.
Yeah, so--
But again, it is a departure from, if you look at our existing code, this would, this would need to have 12 parking spaces for five units.
And there's no way you're going to get 12 in there.
You can't get 12, you'd have fewer units, you'd probably have two units.
Right.
So you'd reduce your parking, and you're not going to get an affordable project providing parking at two and a half per unit. So, but those are the good questions. With this, we'd probably have exceptions. If you went up higher, would it need an exception from, say, building height? Would it need an exception from setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
And the trend of state law right now--
Can't see a three-story building that sticks at 35 feet either.
Yeah, but you're just throwing out--
Yeah, I'm just saying--
Yeah, like, there's different options, and then it depends, yeah.
Right. And the exceptions are kind of flipping, where cities are in a difficult position to say no, unless you're challenging that it's actually not providing affordable housing or has some sort of detriment to the community, so. But I don't know, like, in terms of drought-tolerant landscaping and things like that, I've never heard of that being one of the exceptions.
Yeah, and I thought about, you know, even, you know, like, energy-efficient--
Right.
--units in the house, and things like that.
As you said, the more affordable it is, the more concessions you can ask for.
You can ask for.
Right.
But you're still, you're still bound by the local regulations unless they're waived.
Right.
Right. And I believe in this case, say, I think looking at this, if you maximized affordability, I looked at you would have, say, up to three exceptions.
Mm-hmm.
Parking's obviously going to be one of them.
Right. It almost has to be.
It would be one of the requests, yes. Correct, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from the rest of staff. Please come forward. I know Mr. Miley, I don't know the other gentleman.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley, and I have lived here a long time. In my retirement, I have been involved, very much involved in affordable housing for at least the last six years. And it started out through the creation of an Affordable Housing Committee by the Ojai Valley Democratic Club. And Judy Murphy and I became the co-chair. And some of you may remember, we worked really hard with People's Self-Help Housing to propose a 40-unit rental property behind City Hall, and that didn't make it for reasons that are in the past. Okay. So one of the issues that came out of that was people said, whoa, go look at little cottage-type developments, not a big 40-unit, five-building development. So we did. So Mayor Johnson approached me and said, what about doing something on a city lot? And this is how we have developed what we have today. So over the past two years, Mayor Johnson and I have gradually put together parts of this project for North Montgomery Street, by meeting with bankers, housing authority leaders, community development director, city manager, your city council, and now the Planning Commission. Through our city manager, we developed a contract with Mr. Nicholas Oatway, architect, to do the design drawings which you just saw. We've also had discussions at the Democratic Club meetings a couple times. On Tuesday, April 23rd, I was invited by Franklin Street neighbors to a meeting that they had. It all started because I had been in contact with John Trent, who had contacted Mayor Johnson a year or so ago and said, I live on the street and I'm interested in staying up on this. Mayor Johnson asked me if I would do the liaison, and I did. I had taken over a copy of the administrative report that was presented to the city council and gave it to John Trent and his wife, and at that time, a day later, they invited me to attend the meeting, which I did. During the, oh, during the meeting, one factor that I did not know about was the issue of how problematic the Franklin Street, Franklin Drive Street is, especially as it intersections Montgomery Street, and folks will talk about that. We believe we have a viable design for workforce housing, which will benefit our city and its workers by providing, these are workers who within, who work within the city limits, not city employee, city government employees necessarily. By providing very nice rental housing for folks of limited income, we're talking about low-income but primarily moderate-income categories. And did the Commission, Mr. Connolly, get the packet that you prepared for the city council?
Yes, she has the same information as the council.
And you have on page 333, page 505, or whatever it is, the Ventura County Affordable Housing categories that came from the state in 2018. And it provides information directly to Mr. Powers' question. The mayor, Mr. Connolly, the city manager, and myself all contributed to the overall design, with architect Nick Oatway pulling the ingredients together in what you saw tonight. As you know, we are proposing-- As you know, we are proposing to build on a city lot designated for affordable housing by deed. The cost to build, and this is really important. The cost to build, maintain, and manage has to come from the rental income stream. That which is received on a monthly basis and an annual basis. No city general fund money can go into its operation. It has to make it on its own. Regarding cars and other road vehicles, we intend to restrict ownership as follows. Now, the question about can we do that legally? Santa Barbara allowed people's self-help housing to build a brand-new, two-story, multi-rental unit building downtown with an agreement that there will be no rentals to people who own a car. So, the people that can rent there cannot own a vehicle and cannot use a vehicle that's parked on the city street. How they enforce it, I'm assuming they enforce it well. And we intend to make ours work too. So, it goes like this. The rental contract for one- and two-bedroom rentals will be limited to owning one vehicle and only using one vehicle. We're gonna work really hard to make sure that they're not borrowing a vehicle from somebody else and parking it on the street and using it. So, the emphasis on the contract rental is that if you're caught doing it, you have agreed to vacate the building within whatever is legal. The proposed studio rental will be limited to a no-vehicle ownership or use. Or use. And some, some of us would like to maybe rent the whole thing without anybody owning a vehicle. But we don't think that is real. Anyway, so, and this is in conclusion. Our city has an obligation by state laws, as you well know. And I believe, and I think a lot of you, you will join me, in a moral commitment to work to facilitate reasonably-priced housing for folks who have been priced out of the housing market. Many are paying up to fifty percent of their annual income for rent. More affordable units must be generated in our city. Currently, if you look at apartments dot com, there's practically nothing available to rent, even if you have the money. The continuing tight rental market lifts the prices of market-rate rentals because we don't have much inventory. So, and that's to the detriment of all those folks needing rentals. We especially are working on workforce housing for those working within the limits, the city limits of Ojai. The affordable income categories we are looking at are those of low income, in the picture chart, and moderate income. And as the number of household members go up, the limits on annual income obviously go up. Doing nothing is unacceptable. With the city owning several lots capable of citing affordable cottage-like rentals, we can make, we believe, a small dent in this social problem. We see this first city effort as a prototype for other locations. Any questions? Okay. So, I'm gonna ask-
I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. So, on the vehicle ownership and restricting that, how does that get reinforced and who does the reinforcing?
I'm sorry.
Does that get reinforced and who does the reinforcing?
Well, I know that there's two ways to do that. If you get the license plates of the automobile, you can actually register with the state department, with the Department of Motor Vehicles and send in a license plate and they will tell you who owns it and where they live. And you can also, for thirty-five dollars a year, join a product company who will do the same thing. And they have access to the state, to state's motor vehicle documents for that. So, my hope would be that the contract relationship that we have and the signing of the contract will convince people that cheating is not going to get them very far because if we find out, they have to leave legally right away. So, that's a good question. And I think we're talking about something in the future that we don't have any experience with, but Santa Barbara does.
One thing we do have experience with is the level of enforcement of the city ordinances to date. In a wide variety of requirements. And I, that is something I am concerned about. If someone promises not to have a vehicle and has one, and it's parked in different places, sometimes on Franklin Drive, sometimes on Montgomery.
You can't park on Franklin-
Maybe down the road on Oak Street somewhere. How is anyone gonna know? Do we, do we have someone in the city who is going to patrol this property, taking down license plate numbers and verifying that they are only residents on Franklin Drive? Or only residents on Montgomery Street or somewhere else but not four oh eight North Montgomery? I don't know how we do that.
Well, I think there would might be, yeah, I, I don't have all the answers. But one is to ask the motor vehicle department at least yearly or maybe twice a year, what the ownership of vehicles is for Bill Miley, who happens to live in the one-bedroom unit. And if two vehicles show up, that's evidence for that I broke the contract. That's one way to go. Another is hopefully that we have a moral and ethical agreement with the people who rent because there isn't any other rentals available for now anyway. And the third might be a social contract with people who live around there who might tell us that I've been noticing so-and-so who lives in the studio has a car that they're using that's parked over on dum-dum-dum.
Or someone in one of the other four units has a second car.
Yes, well, we can do that by also asking the motor vehicle department just to, for Bill Miley, who lives in the two-bedroom apartment, how many vehicles is under his ownership?
I'm just-
And the third, yeah.
I'm worrying over who the "we" is that's gonna do that.
Okay. Well, that's a good question. The fourth is, if we could do that, and I don't think we can do it, is to make, I think I already said this, no-vehicle ownership for all the rentals. Now, Councilwoman Francina, I believe, has said she knows a number of people that don't own cars and don't have cars, and they function in the city.
I want to chime in.
What?
I figured it's chime in.
Anyway, that's a good question, obviously.
So, it's a challenge, the, not just the parking, but just vehicles in general in that area. Even if it's, not, even if it's a vehicle not owned by a resident there. I have out-of-town guests coming, whatever it might be. Just overflow of parking, I mean, unless you're a recluse. Well, I shouldn't say that because I don't have a lot of visitors myself. But you can see, you know, if you have friends come over, if you have relatives visiting, whatever number, there's gonna be cars. One option might be going underground and digging down and creating underground parking with more spaces available that stay underground on-site. And then above that parking structure, creating a commons area or something that's usable.
At one point, I think we discussed that. And it might have been Mr. Conley who said that the water table is really high in this valley.
Yeah, and I would say beyond, beyond that too, below-grade parking, the cost is, you're not gonna have, you'd have a very unaffordable housing project.
It won't close a business case, I think.
Yeah, I think what I'm getting is like, is the comments on parking, and I know that's gonna be the lightning rod on this. Four spaces, five units, and especially if you went to seven units. But I haven't talked to Santa Barbara to confirm how that operates and how it is enforced. Because you're right, with everything, conditions on all permits enforcement is difficult. I mean, on, on all permits. And I know we've been having those discussions, that's not unique to Ojai. Especially on projects as they get older. I mean, I would think optimally, somebody else would be managing this project who's in this business and would be overseeing that because this could be a real code enforcement issue that the city is not gonna want to devote staff to.
The city's not prepared to do it, I think.
Right, but I mean, I think this is-
We've talked to the Ventura County Area Housing Agency folks.
Right. And I, I just think this, obviously, and this, this is the purpose of the meeting, that this is new ground. Is you want affordable housing and you're also trying to get people away from vehicle dependence, which is another goal of the city. How do you start to do that? I mean, well, one thing-
Start piling goals on goals, it gets exponentially more difficult.
I also think the nature of the housing, Ojai's not a big dense urban city, but this is near your downtown, and these are small units. So, they may be more inclined with income restrictions and size of the units to be more attractive to people who don't have cars or have one car. Because why am I gonna wanna live in a studio apartment with two cars? Yes, it could happen, but-
Right, most likely, I mean, it's another expense, you know.
Right, it's not an auto-oriented design, I guess is what I'm saying. But clearly, the details in terms of enforcement, I don't have all the answers for that. But you have to be able to answer, one, can you restrict it? And then two, how do you check?
So, contacting Santa Barbara and would be a good, I, and I have a feeling they may be doing this in other areas across the country too. I mean, it would be worth exploring to see how they do it.
Also, the, really, the size, I mean, it's a very small project. And I think that that would help with the ability to monitor who's doing what with their cars, so.
Right.
But, but certainly, the management of it is, is a critical point, so.
Go ahead.
And that leads to another question. I know in the past, we've, you know, heard from the area housing authority. We've had different nonprofit groups come and do presentations for the city. And typically on those larger complexes, they do have like a management system built right on the property and, you know, within the structures and what have you. They have, you know, after-school programs and all, all kinds of things. But in a facility this small, you know, that may not be feasible and it may not happen. But who knows, potentially, one of the units or the occupants of one of the units may become, I don't know if that could happen legally, but potentially could be like a manager, a resident manager. So, things are monitored. You know, it's, it's interesting because I think it's a great idea. And, you know, I mean, I walk, I ride my bike, but I have a car too, you know, and I drive my car. But I know people that, that don't, and they function fine and they use public transportation. Or they're, it's walkable, it's bike-rideable. And some people are in a place where they're fine with that. You can get down to Ventura and get on the train, or if you have to take a shuttle to the airport, it all works out. But it's, so I know it's a new thing, but, but I am open to exploring this. And yes, it's a new thing, but the only way to start something new is to actually explore it. And then here's another thing, and I'm not sure if this could get built into it. And of course, this could, I think the parking is probably the biggest issue once again on this project. Test it out. Could it be almost like a pilot project? I mean, it goes in, let's see how it works. And maybe after a couple of years, it has to be revisited. But of course, it's already built and the parking's there. You'd have to have Plan B kind of in place if you had to make some alterations. I'm not even sure if that's the right answer, but I'm just trying to think ahead. But I, I'm in favor of the project. I think there's just a lot of questions and, and I'm so glad that you came in at this stage, very conceptual stage. You know, to get some feedback and what have you. I think, you know, another issue is, you know, on Franklin Street, I, I realize the, how narrow the street is. There's not, you know, a fire access turnaround at the end, end of the street. But then I'm also wondering, you know, I'm sure the people that live on the street are also doing some street parking. And I realize that's kind of an issue. No street parking at all?
No.
Okay, I must have missed it and I apologize for that. Okay, so basically, nobody could park there. So, nobody could really cheat because you can't park there? Or they'd get a ticket, apparently. Not in Franklin, okay, so they, yeah, so they would get, you know, potentially ticketed if they did that, okay.
I wanted to ask, the next person will, Nick Otway, who is the architect that was contracted to draw up the plans. Nick, will you come up and talk about the plans and how you developed the site? So, can you manage that?
Sure.
For him?
Yeah, I know. I'm just gonna put this up and find on, and so it's like, here.
Well, we all, we all have a small version.
Oh, you do have a small one?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, excellent.
We've got a mini.
No, sharing, right?
Mm-hmm.
For you.
Okay.
Oh, no.
If you need this all.
No, I don't really need it. If they've, they've got the whole thing there that they, basically, as has been used, the word, my name's Nicholas Otway, I'm architect here in Ojai. My folks moved here in sixty-eight and I've been here full-time for the last thirteen years. Conceptually, everything was in mind to certainly address water and solar. The roof of the four-car parking carport was meant to be solar enough. I took it past a couple of solar people I know. And we could actually run the whole project from the roof of the carport. I also have shown-
You're saying in this concept that solar panels on that roof would be part of the development?
Would be part of the, of the, that's part of the conceptual solution.
And that plus a battery would keep everybody running day and night?
Whenever they needed to, yes. And also, off of the roof of some of the elevations, it's indicated where I'm gathering the water and storing it to feed the landscape.
Where are you storing that? Excuse me, where are you storing, storing the water?
Well, it comes off of, not this, that elevation that you just saw a second ago was the studio over the common room. But the others, the other elevations should show it.
I think perhaps the question is, is there a cistern somewhere?
The cisterns are right beside, not below grade, but actually sitting, see. Okay, I need to show the cistern of the other elevation. This one, this one right here.
Oh, I see it.
You see, the idea is to use the roof to gather, that's why I use these facades so that the roof could easily be engineered to be sloped so that we could gather the water in cisterns right next to the-
And how large is that cistern? Is that?
Oh, it's, it's kinda like, it's shown as a fifty-five gallon or something like that. But obviously, it would have to be, it would have to be more than that. And whatever it took, I haven't designed the whole thing for the, for the amount of water that would be required. But conceptually, that's what we would be doing. I mean, that's what I would like to be involved in building anyway.
What was your choice in not doing a below-grade cistern that's much larger?
I haven't designed it, as I said, conceptually. If, if it needed to be below grade, that's what we would do. Or we would put it into swale, swale beds that we'd let it drain into. I've seen it done all over this, even here in Ojai, where they take care of a lot of water coming, coming along. And we'll, we'll find out, I guess, if we really get that much water, what happens. But, and other than that, let's see.
Is there gray, any gray water built into the design?
The, conceptually, my main conceptual concerns was to get the five units on the site and, and provide for common areas. The, the site plan, if you'll look at the site plan, if it's, can you show the site plan, Lou? These red spots are private areas that look into a common space. The common space, depending on what's decided or the group of people that comes, it could be a vegetable garden, it could be a combination garden and children's sandbox type of place. I mean, there's a lot of different possibilities. And this common room is meant to just take care of the laundry facilities for the five units. And besides that, there's a bicycle storage on one end, the staircase to the single unit on top, the studio unit.
You have trash marked on the right end of the common area.
Over here, over here.
That's not a dumpster, I guess.
No.
Trash enclosure?
No, it's a trash enclosure, yeah, right.
I noticed one of your floor plans here is a three-bedroom.
No, there should be two two-bedrooms, and then two one-bedrooms. This building here is a two-bedroom and two one-bedrooms. And then this is a two-bedroom, and this is the studio. I'd like to say, I'd love to answer any questions you have, but I think you folks in the planning commission are at a really incredible place in the history, not just of this town, but when you consider, as an architect, for the last forty years, I have dealt with cars. And we all drive around, one of my favorite things to do is to sit at the coffee roaster and take my own little history of the town from the window. And over the last four or five years, I've measured how many people drive through their, in their car alone, and how many people have somebody with them. And the average over the five-year period has been nine to one. I'm sure you can guess what the nine is and what the one is. I think what the history that's so exciting, and why it's so exciting to be alive today, is that we're going to stop living our life alone and start, and right at the basis of all the conversation that preceded me is related to what do we do about the car? Thank you.
More questions for Mr. Otway?
I just have a question, it might be for Luke, but so, I know it's conceptual, but so are we aware of any other zoning requirements that are not in compliance? Like the open space or lock coverage? Or is it just pretty much, does it look like it's kind of in compliance, except for the parking? Is that what we're talking about?
You know, I think it is. I'd have to look at the SPL, getting the SPL overlay helped a lot, because the setbacks were reduced, the height goes up, it may have a thirty-five-foot height. So, I mean, the only exception that jumped out at me was parking.
Yeah.
And the reason I threw out there could be others was anticipating if we went to seven units. But I think fourteen, fifteen feet setback from Montgomery, and that sounds about right. I would check in the SPL, but if it were just the R2 base zone, yeah, we would have a lot more issues.
So there's no real requirement for the community room, for example? That's just-
No, that's part of the project, right.
Okay, was there, what was the thinking with providing the community room?
The community room?
Yeah.
Just the, it's a tiny project, right? It could hardly be called a community. But I thought that if somebody might live there who became friends with the people in Franklin today, that things happening for that little street could coalesce around something. Say, if they had actually, somebody wanted to turn this into an honest vegetable garden that they shared. I know that, it's just producing the possibility of doing things together, if that makes sense.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So basically, tonight, you know, we have, I'm almost calling this like a pre-conceptual. And it's really getting our feedback on, you know, what do we think about this project? But it's just really, potentially, how many units, what about the parking? And then you'll, I'm assuming, you know, if it goes forward, which I do hope it does, you'll come back to us with some more, a little more detail on it. Yeah, and we are going to hear, we do have public comment cards.
Yes, we do.
Well, so then maybe I'm going to wait till we hear the public comment to go to that next level, because I definitely want to hear that. Yeah, so, okay, I'll leave it at that for the moment, but thank you.
I think that's all for now, then, Mr. Otway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you don't mind sticking around, we may have some more questions as the conversation develops. I also want to say, we have received three emails here, arrived at the beginning of the meeting, so I personally haven't had a chance to read them, from, from, oh, that's from Bobby Corbin.
It's a part of the project.
Is this also a part of the project? Oh, okay, yeah. And from Tom Erickson and from John Trent. So we are not making any decision tonight, either on the project as such or even in terms of making a recommendation to the city council on this. We're here to get community input, find out how people feel, and then wait and see what develops in terms of a real proposed development. And for full disclosure purposes, I have to say, my wife, as a small child, lived on Franklin Drive in fifty-one and fifty-two. And I have to tell you, I personally feel a little nervous driving down that street. It's already pretty narrow. And if there were people parked there, or if I happened to have driven in there, and then there was a fire, and I found a fire truck behind me, I would be in a world of hurt. So I think the parking, probably the biggest issue here, but we need to be particularly careful about it, considering the size of the thoroughfare here. Okay, any other, any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, yeah, we'll do some deliberation and then close it out. Okay, I'll open the public hearing then, and I've been handed a stack of cards, so I'm just going to call people in the order in which I was given the cards. First of all, Mr. John Trent.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. So I know that, obviously, parking is a big issue. I'd love it if you could pull that slide back up, Luke. I don't know if that's possible. Oh, there you go, Sheri. So I know you guys are familiar with Franklin. Obviously, it's a very small street, it's less than twenty feet when you measure it, so it's a one-way street. We have ten homes on Franklin.
How do you get out?
Well, that's the tricky part. So go back to that slide of the lot, if you don't mind. Right here, there you go. So this street, we have, there's ten homes here. There's a home here, a home here, 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 and then there's two, there's a duplex here, and then there's a duplex on Montgomery. So this lot was the exact replica of this duplex over here before it became vacant. So there was four units, two duplexes, one on Franklin and then one on Montgomery. So there's access here, there's access here. So already, for us, we live down here, my wife and I, and we have a hard time getting in and out of our driveway and driving all the way down. This is about a three-hundred-and-fifty-foot road. There's no turnaround here, as you can see, there's a home at the end here. So when, yeah, when there's a fire truck-
Three-point turns in the driveway.
Yeah, when there's an emergency vehicle coming down here, or any service, street sweeper, anything, it's really difficult to get out of here. We showed you guys some pictures. That was just from one of our neighbors having a yard sale, that's what happens. So that's people, that's people that see those no-parking signs and just kind of ignore them, because it's a long street. So walking all the way down Montgomery to get your car, you know, people don't want to do that, so they drive all the way down Franklin, and they park illegally on Franklin for a little while, and they leave. So visitors, we have a hard time with visitors coming to our house and parking, and we have to tell people, now you got to park at Montgomery, and you got to walk in. Now, Montgomery is a busy street, you guys know that.
Yep.
So we get a lot of thoroughfare that comes through here. So I think it's called a connector street or something, I'm not sure exactly.
Collector, feeder?
Feeder, yeah, so it feeds, it feeds a lot, I haven't, right? So when we have cars that are parked along here, which we do quite a bit, I think I showed you guys some pictures, because there's a church right across the street. People do this all the time. There's another affordable housing unit up here, Montgomery Oaks. So we don't really have a problem with affordable housing, that's never been a real issue, not, you know, because we have it in our backyard, anyway, it works fine. But there's a lot of people who park on the street here, you can see their cars right there. There's also, right at the top there, there's an assisted-living area. The people who work there park on the street, because they don't have parking. So this street gets filled up really quick, and when it does, we can't turn out of Franklin very easily. It's very unsafe. So our biggest concern is, we get it, we understand affordable housing's important, but it's really a safety issue for us as residents. You know, if you get too many cars down that street, it's already dense. It's just going to bottleneck us. And if we have a fire, emergency, it's going to get real difficult for us to get out of there. Now, I know in the future, we all want to have no cars, right? But that's going to be like ten, twenty years, you know, that's going to be ways away. We got a lot of people who live in Ojai, they work in Ventura, you know. We have people that get sick, they have to go to Ventura. So a car is necessary up here, you know, unfortunately. We just live in an isolated community.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Next up is Amanda Tallerico? Is that, all right. You can see my name gets butchered a lot, so I try to be careful.
Sorry. My husband and I, with our three young children, bought a house on Franklin Drive this past summer. And part of the reason we chose the house was because we love how small and quiet the street is. It's close to downtown, but you'd probably drive right past it without even noticing it. Franklin Drive's so small, as he said, less than twenty feet wide, in fact, that on-street parking is prohibited. This is nice, because there's very rarely cars coming and going, and the kids can run up and down the sidewalks, and there's not much worry. However, it makes it quite difficult when guests come over. Most of the driveways on the street do not accommodate extra cars, and Montgomery's the only option for extra parking. But with the nearby apartments and businesses, this is not usually an option. In addition to the parking concern, the idea of putting five to seven more homes on this street is a safety issue, because it will also bring a lot of traffic onto our little street. As the plan is now, the entrance to the units would be on Franklin, which means those cars will be coming and going, as well as people looking for the units and guests searching for parking. Our street's a dead-end street without a turnaround point. This makes it even more dangerous when a car ends up on our street accidentally, because they have to figure out how to turn around, which is usually like a six-point turn, or they just reverse all the way back down the street. There are several young children on this street, and I'm very concerned for their safety. We all agree that there's a need for affordable housing, but we do not think this is the lot for it. The residents of Franklin Drive, as well as the nearby streets, would much more benefit from a community park on this property. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. James Tallerico?
Thank you all. I'm her husband, as you can tell, same last name, or, okay. Yes, the street itself is very narrow, Franklin. And what I'm concerned about is the extra parking, like the parking space coming on Franklin, and the people in the fifth unit about monitoring. We've already discussed who's going to monitor the space and whose job that would be. You know, that requires manpower by the city unless somebody else is going to, you know, there's somebody that's going to be on-site to monitor the parking and who has a car. When you think about affordable housing at the rate that it's saying, what, one-fifteen, what person that makes a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars doesn't have a car? And if that hundred person that makes a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars, are they, are they working in Ojai seriously? I mean, they might own a business, but are they actual affordable units for someone that makes, or are they actually being affordable at that point, being a hundred-and-fifteen? Are we actually making a dent in the problem on a space this small? I mean, this is a very tiny lot, as, if you guys, you've been on the street, you know, if you've seen it, it's really small. We just feel like, as a community, this space is not the right space. I think we've got a lot of, there's a lot of prohibish, things prohibiting it with the parking, the entrance off Franklin, the enforcing of parking, how many units you can get on there. It's just a really tight, small space for this, and, yeah, that's it.
Yes, hold on, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So I know in the past, there were the four duplex units there. How did that impact Franklin, or were you, I guess you weren't maybe living there at that time? Maybe any of the neighbors have experienced that? I guess, I'm sorry, I have to come to the podium, but maybe, is there a better way for us to? You should, go ahead and finish, and then maybe he can come-
Thank you.
Oh, there was a letter, okay, so we didn't get to read all these, I apologize. Okay, so it sounds like we'll get, we'll get that information, hopefully. Okay, thanks.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, sir. Next is Bonnie La Forge. Another resident of Franklin Drive.
Yes, hi, I'm Bonnie La Forge, and I've been on Franklin since two thousand and eight. I bought my home, and when I bought it, the two duplexes had already, they'd been hit by a, an oak tree had fallen on it, and they were demolished, and they sat there demolished for quite a while. And it was, it was still there when I bought the house, so it was like, so nobody was living there, so I don't know about that part. But it was actually a blessing to have it cleared away and have it look nice, look empty, really. But my concerns have already, a lot of them have been mentioned already. As far as, right now, without this extra housing, when cars do park on Montgomery, it's very hard to see, to pull out on, from our street, from Franklin, onto Montgomery. And sometimes you just have to wait and go out and hope a car isn't there. So with all this added cars to it, I can't, you know, it'll probably be that way all the time. Right now, it's mostly on the weekends that it gets really, really busy. And as far as our street being so narrow, when people do come around, as the people have mentioned, and have to do all those five-point turns, they've backed into my mailbox before, and it's kind of on wobbly legs. So it is a hazard that way for people. It's not easy to turn around if you don't have a driveway to pull into. Again, I agree with what other people have said, that I'm all for affordable housing, but I think this is a lot of units and without, and the requirement of hoping people aren't going to have cars. I mean, I work in Ojai, but I'm not close enough to home that I can walk or ride my bike to work, so I do need my car to get to work. So in a perfect world, you would hope that, you know, everybody wouldn't have a car, would follow the rules, but I can't really imagine it all happening. So, anyway, thank you for taking all this into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Tom Erickson.
Hi, I'm Tom Erickson. I've lived in the valley for forty-six years now. I, you have my letter, so I'm not going to read it.
Yes, sorry, we haven't had the time to read it yet.
I read it, Tom.
Okay.
Well, good for you.
And if you haven't read it, I'm sure you have a chance to. Well, I've learned some from the discussion tonight. I'm glad that we're, we are aware that this is a conceptual review, nothing's locked in stone yet. We've heard some discussion that the number of units would have to be, you know, up to maybe eight, seven or eight, to make the units affordable. And obviously, that would be a real problem, impacting the parking even more. As someone, as John said, the lot is a mirror image of the lot where I live. I live right across the street at four oh two. Our, so it's two duplexes, one faces Montgomery and one faces Franklin. And I presume we're typical residents. The four families that occupy our units have eight cars. And so that's, that's, we have four parking spaces, but eight cars. So four of those cars go out. Our car actually parks in the lot.
You said it's a duplex, and you have four families?
We're four families.
Oh, two duplexes, I'm sorry.
Right. Right, um.
Perhaps that's why the city requires two parking spaces per unit.
Well, uh, I, I, I think the original requi, uh, the, the units were built in nineteen forty-nine, nineteen fifty-one, that whole block was developed. It's, uh, I've been trying to find out why the street is so narrow, and, uh, and, and all, and the opinions I've gotten are that, uh, the most, the most widely held opinion is that the, um, when the street was built, uh, the cars were a lot smaller. And, uh, people, uh, you know, the, the, people, people didn't go, didn't, didn't need to go to Ventura as much, they, they stayed local, so they really didn't require cars a lot. Um, apparently, the, the, the developer, uh, Mr. Franklin Peters, uh, was able to scoot the, scoot the narrower streets through the process somehow. Um, in nineteen eighty-four, sidewalks were added, so that might've been the reason why. I, I'm not sure if the street was originally narrow, that narrow, maybe the sidewalks made it more narrow, I'm not sure. Um, but the, uh, but the single space was, was typical for that era, and that's why the, most, all the houses only have, have single spaces, although some have been remodeled to make the driveways a little bit wider or a little bit longer. Ours only has a single space for each unit. Um, uh, I wanted to be sure, uh, I, I said so in my letter, that, um, we, we're not, uh, we're definitely not opposed to the city, um, trying to provide affordable housing for its residents. We, we understand that there's a housing crisis going on. Um, as I said in my, in my letter, uh, I, I, I'm not sure that this state, uh, is this, this same, same game over and over again is the way that, that's the problem's ever gonna be solved. I think something else needs to happen. I think, uh, the whole housing system has been going in this direction for years and years and years, and this is, this is culminating in this. Um, I'm definitely not against affordable housing, in fact, I need affordable housing myself in order to stay here in Ojai. My unit is affordable right now, and, uh, to the kindness of my, our landlady, and, uh, I hope that it stays that way for a while. Um, so, uh, thanks a lot for your, uh, your opinion to all this, I, I know that you guys are, uh, you guys do a lot of good work here, and I really appreciate it. And if you just keep us in the loop for any further deliberations, we'd like to share what's going on. Uh, you know, I, I do wanna concur strongly with all those statements about parking and the traffic hazards, uh, there, there's just too numerous to mention really, uh, but I think we covered them all here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. And we have Councilmember Souza Francina.
Good evening. So, uh, this is definitely one of my favorite topics. Um, what I would like to see is, I would like a paradigm shift from all of you to see a car-free development, the first of its kind, in Ojai, as a positive. There are plenty of people in Ojai, including myself, who would like a car-free lifestyle. When I was on the city council before, I did not have a car. I felt it was my duty as a public official to set an example, and I can't tell you the number of calls I was constantly getting, people wanted to give me a ride. But I was, you know, twenty years younger then, and I was happy to ride my bike everywhere. So this is a positive. A car-free development is not a, don't see it as a negative. There are people that long for that. There are people who have, I myself commuted for about twenty years, all over Santa Barbara, Thousand Oaks, LA, and there are people who are ready to leave their car alone. Secondly, this is not happening in isolation, this is happening as part of a bicycle pedestrian master plan to make the whole town more walkable, more bike-friendly. There are many people who are driving to work simply because it's not safe, okay? As the, the parking problem is only going to increase, we have to face it head-on. So, um, this is also, the other concept that goes hand-in-hand with this is the concept of car sharing. That has to be part of the discussion. People do need access to a car for longer trips, so that, that can, you know, in, in communities worldwide that are car-free, they have access to reliable public transportation and some way to get around. This is all, this is part of a bigger, it's not happening in isolation. For this to succeed, you have to look at the whole picture, but stop looking, every time I hear you, your face gets long as you worry about people cheating. You wanna attract people that want this kind of lifestyle. You're not, you, this is, there are hundreds of people looking for housing. Among those hundreds, you're going to find people who either cannot drive, who may be, you know, that I, in our, on our complete streets committee, there's a blind woman, she'd be a perfect candidate for housing close to town. You know, there are all kinds of people who are the right, who want this kind of lifestyle and who would see it as a positive. And then, I know my time is, I've never been at the podium watching this tape. So, um, as far, you're lucky you have a narrow street.
Light turns red, the podium blows up.
Because I would rather, I think if you had a wide street, you would have the same problem that the people have on Grand Avenue. There's plenty of parking on Grand Avenue, but kids cannot play on that street, you know, so, you know, you'd be, you're, you're lucky that you are living on a narrow street. And then I wanna find out more about this parking lot that's nearby, that sits empty. Isn't there a parking lot nearby? Some church? I, I, you know, we're moving into the era of shared parking, and if guests would just bring a little cart with them, like you do at the airport, usually they can get to your house if they walk three blocks. We live in the most beautif, one of the most beautiful valleys in the world, don't look at it as a hardship to have to walk three or four blocks. It's a pleasure and it's good for your health. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here present that wishes to speak on this item? All right, then I close the public hearing, and we'll come back to the commission for deliberation. Yes, ma'am?
I'll start the, the conversation. Uh, number one, I wanna say that I, I heard from the neighborhood, and I completely understand, um, their concerns. Um, I also wanna say that I am for the project. I know it's new, I know it's gonna be different, I'm completely open to it, and, and open to the process of potentially what could be there, and for it to be a win-win project. A win for the neighbors that are there, not excess parking, um, a win that the intersection could actually function safely for everyone, um, a win for the people who are looking for affordable housing, and that this project could be, is kind of outside the box, so to speak. So I, I would start by saying, yes, in the contract, there's a restriction on parking. It looks, there's different ways that that could go. It could be the shared parking, I want, uh, Councilmember Francina brought the thing about shared pro, parking, and I know this has happened on some of our commercial projects that have come in, where a property hasn't had enough parking, but there's an adjacent one, and they do get an agreement. So I'm not sure if that would happen, but that's a possibility, so I wanted to throw that out there, that's, that's another possible thing. So I do think, um, restricting the parking, I know it's new, it will have to be monitored, will have, would have to be figured out, but I think that would happen. I also do think that some sort of a road diet or some sort of, uh, application, like a complete streets application, could happen at that intersection where Franklin and Montgomery are, to make it safer for you and anyone that needs to go in left or right, um, onto Montgomery. Potentially that, that could be, uh, thrown into the mix. I also think, um, you know, my initial thought would always be to maximize on the units, number one, to make them more affordable, to make it, um, you know, just more, a more viable project. But then it gets back to this issue with the parking and what have you, so I think the, the units may have to get limited, I'm not gonna put a number on what it is, but I think in this exploratory next phase, next process, you know, this processing, that just needs to be looked at. Seven may be too many, it may not work, you know, with the parking or the restricted parking, then again, maybe it does, um, or it may have to be limited. So I'm kinda being a little, uh, you know, loose there. I just think it needs more work. Then I also think the question of who will manage the, um, the facility, which includes potentially parking, um, issues, potentially, needs to be addressed. Um, also, uh, one of our commissioners who's missing tonight, Commissioner Corbin, um, sent out a, a very nice, detailed, uh, email with her thoughts, and I would like to say that, um, Mr. Oatway and Mr. Miley, take a look at it, she had some really, um, and I know this is very conceptual and you haven't gotten into the, the details, but this has to do a lot with the interior space, of how it functions, and so I think, you know, aesthetics are super important, but how it functions is really important. So please, uh, make sure you get, um, ahold of that, take a look at it. And then the other, um, item that I would say to look into, and it looks like you've started that process, because you mentioned the solar and the, the rainwater capture, but, but to the best that you can, and I understand, you know, we're talking about an affordable project, sustainability, resilience, methods and materials, um, I would encourage, you know, you to, to go as far as you can with that. And that, those are my comments for the, to start.
Ray?
Thank you, Kathy. Um, I wanna thank the residents for coming here and showing up. I wish more residents would come to Planning Commission when things are before us, 'cause then I feel like I'm dialoguing with someone. And I also know, you know, it's not always easy for everyone to come up to the podium and speak to us, you know, we're all official in our big chairs and-
Yes.
Days up here, and there's this, you know, kind of-
And you're on television.
Foe.
It's true, you're being recorded, yeah.
Foe authoritarian thing happening, um, but we all live here, so thank you. And I wanna, uh, thank, um, Mr. Miley, Mr. Nix for being here and all the work you've done into this. Um, Commissioner Nolan touched on some of the things, I'm gonna dive a little deeper possibly on this. Um, Councilwoman, um, Francina has been holding the torch for so many decades here to create a, a healthier community, not just physically, 'cause that happens when you ride a bike, but just in general, you know, Ojai Valley has the second worst pollution in Ventura County, so the more carbon we can not spew out and, um, I mean, a lot of factors to that, 'cause we don't have a lot of industry. So the parking is, is, I, I agree with you, Souza, you know, it's, it's, I think we, we have a paradigm shift here, and it's more in policy, where a lot of the ideas are unable to be implemented yet. Um, those two things are starting to meet, it feels, within the last couple years, there's, there's some movement, the, the dial has moved a little bit. Um, let's say something gets built there, we could limit it and make a condition that only people that ride bicycles can live there.
Right.
Or they could walk. Um, we could leave out the parking spaces completely at the site, and there's only shared parking across the street. Um, I think onsite management, one of the residents needs to be there to be a manager, like a lot of complexes have, even though it's small. Um, maybe not necessarily hierarchical in its nature, you know, I like to think more circular than pyramidal when it comes to that, that kinda organization. Um, and then in terms of the building, I was really happy to see the downspout for water, water collection, I was really happy to hear about solar, I think solar's a good interim step. I have my opinions about solar and the waste that has occurred in manufacturing it, but, um, it's a step in the right direction as an interim technology for the next fifty years, maybe. Um, and in terms of the building itself, I don't wanna err on the side of form over function. Um, and here's what I mean by that. A lot of us are putting a lot of effort into what's being coined now as architecturally significant structures.
Yes.
And an archi, architecturally significant structure is one, that one is visionary. What do we want the community to be fifty to a hundred years from now? What do we wanna build in a way that is based on a past model, or do we wanna build in a way that only uses non-toxic materials? I don't know if you've seen the late, latest research on human disease and home environment and how they're directly connected because of the materials we use? Also, when there's earthquakes or fires, those materials get spewed in the air, go into our watershed, um, these things concern me. So I don't, sometimes when we think affordable, we think least expensive, but the thing is there are millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars available for grants for architecturally significant structures in related to climate change and new kinds of building methods. Um, you know, sometimes I think on this commission, 'cause I'm not an architect or, or a landscape, uh, landscaper or, or a policy, well, we're policymakers, but I don't have the same background. I'm, I, I, Johnny Johnson, who was at the Leclercce California Watershed Summit that we attended over the weekend, he was on a panel, he said, you know, I'm a generalist, I'm not a specialist, and I really related a lot to that. I'm, I'm a generalist, I see the big picture, and I don't think we can talk about this ecological thing over here and leave this one out. I don't think that serves us. We have a small enough community where we, we can be a model and, and example to other communities. That's what's so beautiful about Ojai City and the Ojai Valley. So I encourage, um, us to look at any kind of build, I'm, I wanna say that I'm not a decision-making point whether that's a place to build something or not, but if there is something to be built there, um, I want it to be the most cutting edge there can be. You know, I kinda see myself on the commission here as the voice of Gaia in some ways, um, 'cause she doesn't always have a voice, or it doesn't always have a voice, you know? And, um, let's try something new, you know, in this letter from Commissioner Corbin, she wrote, um, you know, maybe there could be a design competition with a small prize to architectural schools, not to take away all the hard work, uh, you've done, Mr. Miley and Mr. Nix, but, you know, maybe there's an R, RFE out or, or some kinda competition on what kind of phenomenal structure could be put in here that would work for everybody. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Lottis.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I, I'm actually really in favor of this project. Um, I do have a question about, uh, taking access from Montgomery versus Franklin. Um, could that be done? Do you have any idea? Uh, do you have any thoughts about that?
I haven't talked to Public Works, which would obviously have to be involved-
Yeah.
-getting the curb cut and the access there, um, but I don't think there's any prohibition on it, it'd just be a matter of citing it.
Okay, I would definitely like to see that explored, because, um, if that could be done, if some, uh, the orientation of the, the access to Montgomery rather than Franklin, that, that puts a further, um, barrier, so to speak, between this project and the street and the use of the street. And with the project being on the end of the street like that, I don't accept cars going by mistake, um, I don't, it seems like, um, that would really help with, um, you know, cars associated with this project going down Franklin. Um, so, so anyway, I, I- with this project going down Franklin. So, anyway, I would like the layout to be explored, the different access point to be explored. I, I, I think I'm, I'm fine with thinking about the five units and the four parking spaces, so it's not totally car-free, it's four spaces for five units, with careful management and perhaps the onsite, somebody who lives onsite being designated the manager might be helpful. So, the management is critical.
Nobody's going to manage the project for free.
Right. So, I, I, there's a fine line to walk here between being supportive of the project and wanting it to be the most admirable, spectacular, perfect project ever. And so, I think some of the things that we're talking about, they're awesome, and I think there probably is grant money out there for some of these nice things, the solar panels and the gray water and the cisterns and something else that you said, Ray, I forget what. So, I'm all for that, but that would require probably help from people in the community to go after the grants, and maybe there needs to be some kind of a group effort behind this. I'm happy to know that we're only talking, we're probably only talking about a parking variance or deviation. Actually, a bonus, density bonus probably resolves that question. And so, that's where I am. I think, I would like to see it happen. I think it's important. I think it needs to, it does need to be a project that is an example. I just went to the conference for planning commissioners with Commissioner Nolan, and the discussion was definitely on affordable housing, and talking about how it can be made to look good. So, that's what I want. I want it to be made to look good. I want it to be made to be as compatible with the neighbors as possible. If there's some kind of traffic calming technique we can use on Franklin, great, you know, have that incorporated into the project. And, and maybe we can even look at, if we're concerned about people actually having cars because they have too much money, maybe we need to look at extremely low or very low income, and where people are more likely to, or younger, they're more likely to say, "I'm happy using cars." I think the millennial generation is actually pretty, pretty tuned into that. So, that's where I am. I think that this problem, this project is a good idea, and I think we just need to address ways to really make it work with the neighborhood and the potential tenants. Thanks.
Thank you. I have just a few things that concern me, and I would appreciate it if staff and staff augmentation here that we have with us tonight would take a look at these issues. Clearly, the first is parking. I would like to know, I'm sure you don't know at this point, but there was mention made of an affordable housing complex slightly north on Montgomery. I'd like to know how many units are there, and how many parking spaces are there?
There's 24 units and two parking spaces per unit, with several death paces, about 60 spaces off here.
60 spaces for 24 units, okay? Okay? That's a, that's a start. We could, we could get rid of the problem of additional traffic here by specifying tenants have no cars. I am not sure that's legal, and I think we need to talk with the city attorney about that. There was mention made of, there isn't a development like that in Santa Barbara right now, where the residents are not allowed to own cars. I don't know if anyone has tested that in litigation, but it seems to me to be pretty restrictive. And I would like to know the, the potential that we might have of, of saying no cars, or, or limited cars. We have, okay, so we have a development just to the north, a block or so to the north, that has two and a half spaces per unit, roughly. Clearly, this won't work with five units, but I think we need to figure out what it is legal to do, and whether or not one can, in fact, legally, and, you know, check, check the litigation, see, see where we stand with, with the parking. A second concern I have is the SPL overlay district. I've read through it. It's 10-2.704G3A, set two categories of preferred tenants. The first is persons who have full-time gainful employment in the city but currently reside elsewhere, and target income households who currently reside in the city but whose housing costs exceed those deemed affordable. I would like to know, how legal is it to restrict the, we've already talked about the no cars business, how legal is it to say, if you work in the city, you get first shot at one of these places? I understand that state law sets out some things that talk about financial aspects of renting. But if we start saying you have to work here to rent here, I don't know how legal that is. And yet, that, that is currently in the municipal code, and I don't know if that's ever been tested in litigation, or that issue has been.
I don't know either on that, but I think you can set preferences. What can change things is if you take different funding sources, if you accept federal money or state money, the tendency is the more money you're taking in, the less restrictions you're going to apply, because grants always have rules attached to them. So, it, that may be a factor-
That sounds like nondiscrimination of some sort.
You may have to, you may have to open it up more. It's always that question of when you take a grant, you get money, which sounds good, but you have to look at what comes with the grant, which is why, I think that's very much a policy question, probably at the city council level. Who is your target audience here? Is it Ojai households? Is it, and does that mean valley, live and work, just live? Because if those are, if those are things you're really trying to target, you may have to then focus where you're getting your funding from.
Yeah.
But that's definitely a question-
My question really is, how legal is it to establish this kind of a target audience?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. The last thing, and this, I'm, I'm sorry to say, I'm going to probably bring up every time there's any sort of proposal here. What's the water supply for fire suppression at this, at this parcel? I don't think, don't have an instant answer, but, but that's going to be my question every time a development comes up. I, I have the feeling that there are areas, perhaps even large areas of the city, where there is not sufficient water supply for fire suppression. And this is not just a matter of concern for the four, five, seven, whatever units that are on this property, but for the neighborhood. And so, I would like to know, how do we determine what the requirements are? I think there's probably a fire department or fire protection district standard. Second, how do we verify that the water supply and fire hydrants meets that standard, and how do we enforce it? Because right now, as I have read in conditions of approval for other, other things, you have to go get this fire, fire protection district form. Well, what does that form do? And what if it sets out standards that you can't meet? It's not the fire department's responsibility to provide water at any particular parcel. It's the fire department's responsibility to use whatever water is available at that parcel to put out a fire. So, it's got to be somebody else like CASIDAS now, through our community facilities district, the old Golden State thing. But I would like to hear from staff, one, what are the standards? Two, who's responsible for meeting them? I'm pretty sure it's CASIDAS. And three, does the water supply at this parcel meet those standards? Because I would hate, I would hate to say to the city, "I'm sorry, we can't, we can't recommend building on this parcel because it's not safe." And there are other things that can be done. For those who don't know, I also serve on the Ojai Valley Sanitary District Board. And if there's somebody who is not on sewer right now, they have a septic system, much of the arbalotas like that. Okay, if you want to get on the sewer, then what you do is you go to the, to the sanitary district and you say, "I want to get on the sewer." And they say, "Okay, well, here's the closest point of sewer right now, and it's going to take X thousand dollars to extend that sewer to your property." Okay? You have to pay that, and then deed it over to the district. Now, that, that extension of the sewer is likely to serve more than just your property. But what they do is they establish an escrow account, and let's say that sewer extension, and we had a case like this over on Cuyama, that sewer extension will serve 10 properties. Only one, right now, wants to get on the sewer. The others all have septic. It's going to cost $50,000 to dig up that road, put in the 24-inch sewer, or whatever it is. And the homeowner who, who is the first one, is going to pay that $50,000. But the district sets up an escrow account so that any time one of the other nine finally decides to join the sewer district and get on the sewer, they're going to pay a tenth of that $50,000 to that first homeowner. I would suggest that the water supply here should be carried out in the same way. And so, if there is insufficient water for this parcel, then we need to figure out what it would cost to provide sufficient water at this parcel. And then, we can talk about, how does that affect the business case for putting a development on this property? So, those are, those are my three or four concerns right now. I'm obviously not against affordable housing. I'm not against this project, but I think we have some serious questions to be asked before we could make a recommendation to the city council on it. Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
I wanted to say that I'm in agreement with Chair Quilisi on the water issue. I don't have a map at this point, but I am aware in certain areas of the city, the size of the water, the supply line is so low that if you added so many units, and let's say there was a fire and all the sprinklers went off, the required ones, it's, you know, reduces the pressure, then it may not be the right volume of water, the pressure goes down, and then you have a problem in another area. And that's similar to what happened in Ventura. Just for example, during the time-
Well, they also lost power to the pump stations.
Well, they lost that too, but there was some issues with the, the supply lines that went heavy. So, it's just something that I think our entire community needs to be aware of, and it's something, especially when there's going to be a development on a property and there's going to be several units and what's, what happens to be going in. And then, at the same time, it protects the neighbors in the area also.
Right.
So, it's, it's really a citywide issue, and probably maybe even countywide, but since we're just dealing with the city here, it's something that we, I feel and agree with Commissioner Quilisi, we need to look at.
Okay.
But Luke, at some point in the designer, in the review of the application, we, we assume we get a, will serve letter from the appropriate agency?
Yes, absolutely. This would be run by everyone. And again, I think what-
Before we come back.
Yes. And I think what Commissioner Nolan said is, this is very much on the front end of a concept design, but knowing, most projects are going through multiple hearings. This was likely to get it on the radar. And there are issues here that I'm sure the city hasn't dealt with, that other communities are, like the parking reduction. And, you know, how do we fit this into the neighborhood, all those things? There's, there's a lot of issues I know we need to resolve, but I think the point of tonight was, again, to get the community, to give them an opportunity to talk about the project and see it before anything definite is proposed, and to get a read on, it's an affordable, it's an affordable housing site almost to the point of you can't do anything else, under the nature it was purchased, the zoning, the deed restriction, it's an affordable housing site. So, then the question becomes, knowing that, how many units?
Can we do it?
Yeah. And then, what are all those other things we need to solve? Like, when we presented this to the city council on April 9th, it was, I believe it had three options where we said, "Your housing element has identified this as four, we're showing five, and if everything aligns and you grant a density bonus, you could go up to seven." And most of the council discussion then focused on, "Well, when you come back, forget the four, let's focus on the five and above," was where the, where the conversation went at the end of the night. Which again, means we still have all the same issues. Could you redesign it and increase both units and parking? Sure. Maybe you have taller buildings. Maybe you do some other things that aren't shown now. Taking access off Montgomery, obviously, would change things. And that, that does jump out at you. I know when I first went by the site is Franklin's very narrow. It's not just-
Why would you, why would you pick an access onto a 20-foot street?
Yeah, I mean, it could work, but it's, it's not just a small street, it's very narrow. You know, and it doesn't really go anywhere. It's more like a long driveway feeding residents in a lot of way. It doesn't really operate like a street. So, I understand the concerns that this is not just a basic residential street. So, but I think that the issues identified really weren't surprising, but they're, it's good to flush them out, because when you talk about parking, it's like, okay, what's the cutoff? I mean, between four and 12, that's, that's a big gap. Yeah. And, you know, and again, as I just reiterating, I mean, housing, housing law, what's coming from Sacramento is changing so fast, you can't even keep up with it. And I mean, essentially, the move now as a planner is, you're going towards multifamily housing almost by right in single-family zoning districts. That's what's happening. And the current Senate Bill 50, which is what's pending, and I'm going to get off, but I mean, that's, it looks like if that were to be adopted today, is counties that have over 600,000 people are going to be subject to essentially a lot of things being driven out of Sacramento. Well, Ojai's a small city, but the county's over 600,000. So, while certain counties that are arguably urban like Marin would be accepted from that, Ventura County won't. So, I think there's going to be an increasing push to add housing units, especially affordable ones. And I think this city's done a really good job with accessory dwelling units. But if we have to go to regional agencies and say, "Well, look what else we've done, we haven't added housing." That's the one thing, I think, getting these projects or redesignating some property that is not currently zoned properly, that would allow housing, those are going to be big challenges for the city to start looking at.
And legalizing ADUs where people already live doesn't add to the housing stock, it just adds to the RENA numbers.
Right. And I think RENA, the one concept, and we should probably talk about this at a different hearing, is RENA is always looking ahead at what you can potentially add. It's not focused on necessarily what you did in the past or what you actually built. It's, are you freeing up land to add units?
Yeah.
Yes, it helps to actually add the units, but it's really focused on eliminating land use constraints to not add units. So, things like, say, if you had a commercially zoned property or a VMU property, the districts have a lot of similarities. VMU allows up to eight units per acre of housing. C1 does not allow housing. So, things like that, in terms of how RENA, Sacramento, SCAG are looking at it, that's, in a sense, creating the potential for future housing.
Okay. Ray?
I appreciate that you brought up the water, and the water pressure, and the water availability. I happened to meet an engineer that works for a- I happened to meet an engineer that works for a company over the weekend who was talking to me about the Casitas municipal water district's plan on enlarging pipes and, and infrastructure, where, you know, the middle of the city lands and the timeline of that, or how they're budgeting, I'm not sure. But I know it's on their radar because enough of us are speaking about the breakdown that happens and has happened and what occurs when there's sprinklers in a house that take away from the water pressure at the hydrant. You know, before my house burned up near Matilah, they had just replaced the hydrant up there from a four inch to a six inch. We didn't get a chance to use it, but they increased it.
Fire came through a little too fast.
A little too fast. I also, I just want to call in on myself that I know I jump into talking Title 10 and I'll probably hear about it again because, you know, this commission-
Title 9?
Or Title 9, excuse me. Because this commission is about land use and I always go into building because that's a passion of mine is the building and what we're using and how we build. And there's gray area there. So I just want to call myself out on that. I'm not going to say I'm ever going to stop speaking about that stuff because honestly, it's, it's very, very important that we start setting precedent on how we're building here in our little community.
I think it's okay for us to, to definitely bring it up because it's part of the, I mean, it does, it all figures in. But I also wanted to say one thing, you know, it's, you know, it sounded like we were talking about a lot of problems here, but on every project, there's opportunities and constraints. And I wanted to go back to you, Mr. Otway, and actually and to Councilmember Francina, that this is actually really exciting and it's, it's a new, it's something new. We don't know what the answer, we haven't figured it out yet. We're like, we're exploring. But I, I just feel confident in the, our community that we're going to figure this out and that it's going to be, it potentially can be a win-win project. And I find that very exciting. Leave it at that.
I'd like to ask our community development director, that's probably better directed to Public Works, but I don't know. I understand completely your, your hesitation about pulling out of Franklin Drive onto Montgomery. I live on West Eucalyptus off of Foothill. There's that little piece, there's West Eucalyptus and then Mallory. And that's it. There's two ways out of my neighborhood. I'm lucky I have one more than you. But in both cases, you pull to the stop line and you can't see the cross traffic, even if there's no parked cars there. And on Montgomery, there typically are going to be a bunch of parked cars. And I'm wondering, so you, you stop there and then you inch ahead a foot at a time, trying to balance your ability to see the oncoming traffic with your vulnerability to having one of them hit you. And I'm wondering, is there something that could be done, whether this project goes in this form or some other form? Can we, can we paint the curbs 50 feet back from the corner of Franklin and Montgomery so that when cars continue to park on Montgomery, which I know they will, that at least you have a little bit more line of sight to traffic up and down Montgomery? I don't know what the rules are for doing that kind of thing. I can see somebody with a, an advanced form of graffiti and a spray can of red paint going out and painting the curbs at one point. Not legal, but it would accomplish a good for the community. And I'm just wondering if you could tell me what's possible?
Well, I would have to coordinate that with Public Works Director. And I haven't lived with this daily pulling out of that street, but I can, I can imagine. It's kind of like our safety discussions.
I had that problem both ends of my neighborhood, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, I could see what we could do. I mean, there's the trade-off of you re-red curb, you lose parking on street.
Yeah.
You know, that's sort of the, you're balancing safety risk of people wanting to make a left turn onto a busier street than the one they're coming out of.
Well, it's equally, equally dangerous trying to make a right turn and go north on Montgomery for that matter.
Right.
Yeah.
So yeah, there's that balancing of do you-
Anyway, if you could, if you could look into that and give us some advice on, on what kind of things are possible because it, it's going to come up again.
Well, and now that this, this is before us and is probably going to be advancing to a more detailed stage, I think we have to look at are there things we can do to, for people on Franklin Drive to make that safer?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I'm just going to make a quick comment. So Chair Quilisi and I are both on the Complete Streets Committee, and we pretty much just came-
She's in charge.
We, anyway, we were actually out today walking the streets. And what I have right here happens to be the, and it may change, I think they're updating it, but this happens to be the, the street overlay project for the city of Ojai. It's a, it's a map. And so we're looking at all the streets that are potentially going to be resurfaced for 2019. And Franklin, I just looked, happens to be on there. I wanted to look first to see if Montgomery was, but it's not. But Franklin was on there, so.
This, this is typically a two-year project and the repaving gets done in the second year of the two years. But the city tries to put two years' worth of money together to get a better contract for getting the resurfacing done.
So the reason I brought it up is we, with Complete Streets right now, we're doing what we call a safe sidewalk survey aligned with the capital improvement, street overlay project. And so potentially, because we were talking about it today and we didn't come to any resolution, I think we, I might say it right now, we're going to add Franklin Street to be our next street to go look at. And so not only are we doing safe sidewalks, that's our priority and it looks like from the photos and I haven't, I have gone down your street, like you have sidewalks, but we're also looking at if we see any hazards, things that could be added to the street.
Hazards to pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, so we're making notes and then all that information is going to be back to a consultant in the Public Works Department. So I'm, I'm going to officially, as the Chair of Complete Streets, say that in June, we're going to go out to Franklin Street. So I hope that helps.
And a few times a year, Ace Hardware has a two-for-one special on cans of paint as well and probably by a roller.
Okay, have we, have we about beat this one to death? Oh, I, I would like to ask Mr. Miley and Mr. Otway and, and Mr. Connolly, do you, do you feel like you've gotten enough of a feel of the commission's thoughts on this to proceed to the next step, whatever that turns out to be?
I think I have, but I'm not drawing the plans. So I'm not the architect. I don't know if-
Trying to drink from the fire hose. Yeah, just a moment.
I think the commission has come up with something here that I like a lot, which is the issue of building it kind of in the paradigm of moving ahead with gradually reducing the parking issue. And one of you said, maybe there's a possibility of no parking and rentals being offered to people with no cars as the first phase. And if we have all the units filled, we have no car, no cars. And we can take the four spaces that are potentially lined out for parking and plant something there or do something with it. If we get-
Put another two units in if you plan ahead.
Well, I don't know what we want this, if it works on top of it. Yes, we could have, we could have the whole place being no car ownership, no car use.
Provided it's legal, yes.
And if that didn't happen, we had some vacancies because we didn't have any families that would come in or people that would come in and rent. We could then add a car use rental, one car use rental. I like that, that idea's really good. But yes, I think your comments and suggestions are really good. We need to find out from our city attorney whether there's any restrictions on us restricting ownership of cars. Need to find that out.
And, and-
And I like the issue of-
From my point of view, any, any non-financial discrimination in terms of priorities for the housing?
Yes, exactly. That's one reason why we're trying to do this with bank money rather than with money from the state or federal government because of the restrictions. And for the last several years, we've been really looking at the issue of workforce housing, people who work here and can't live here, or people who work here and are paying more than 30% of their income. Yes, that's right. Thank you very much for all your comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Otway, did you have something you wanted to add?
Only that a few considerations I made as far as a site plan was we looked at the, the water level and the possibility of not undergrounding car, but taking them down a half level and putting the units on top. I mean, there's a number of ways, but I think you're, you've gone a long way in the conversation this evening towards all of the opportunities for considering how this little pilot project might go forward. It could be no cars, it could be, but at least the conversation is wide open and I think congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
And if there's, and I would urge you again to look at an entry point off of Montgomery because there's, there's plenty of traffic on Franklin now, just with the few houses that are there. I'm sorry, sir, did you?
Yeah, if I could, I was just wondering, I know the lot has been deemed affordable housing, but if, let's just say hypothetically, considering all the parking issues and some of the other issues that have been brought up, if it was left alone, could it be turned into a park? Could it be something else than affordable housing or does it have to be affordable housing?
I think that's a deed restriction at this point.
The shorter answer is anything can change, but right now there would be a lot to go through legally because one, you had public money taken from affordable housing funds used to purchase it with the intent of affordable housing, which is why there was then a grant deed put on it. So even if it transferred ownership, if somebody else bought that now, they would still have a grant deed restricting it for affordable housing. So that would be a pretty involved process I'd need to talk to the city attorney about. So, and I think also too for cities like I was going on earlier, sort of globally about affordable housing, cities now would not want to be seen in the light of taking sites that were designated through a land use change for affordable housing and have a deed restriction for it and then freeing it up.
Got it.
So more than anything, yes, when people say, can that be done? Almost anything can be done through time, patience and money.
That would be really hard.
But this is, I would, this is really a site that's long been identified for affordable housing. Even though it is small. I mean, it, it is a small site, so.
One final question, are there other lots that the city's considering for a pilot or is this the only one?
There are other city lots, I'm not familiar with all of them. This is certainly out in front as the pilot project lot. I think there are some other larger pieces that we're also getting looked at.
Probably because it's small.
And because it's small.
There are larger lots.
Yes.
They're not city-owned necessarily.
Right.
But they have been discussed as available for affordable housing.
There are a number of SPO sites. Right. Yeah, much larger sites as well.
Much larger, like two acres.
Yeah, so I think the feeling here is this is kind of like the baby steps project. It's a small lot. You're not looking at a lot of units, so you get, you know, the city's very new at this too. I mean, we've been talking to the county, you know, housing agency to figure out, how does this work? Number of units? How do you finance it? Who manages it? All, all of these things that are coming up tonight, we're sorting them out along with the community.
And we're a long way from knowing for sure what we're going to do.
Right, exactly. Okay, cool. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And two more comments. It's going to take a couple of years at least for any of this to happen. So even though we may not be able to do a park, there is a seed swap every year and free wildflower seeds. So, you know, we could always use more beneficials. I also want to mention a project, I met the mayor of Moab, Utah, and even though, you know, building costs are much less there, there, before she was the mayor, she started an organization called Rebuilding Community. And they're doing, you know, teamwork builds of straw bale homes that are pre-permitted. And they're able to build them at $70 a square foot because the, because of the labor force they come in, sort of like Habitat for Humanity, and they're building, you know, these straw bale homes for very little money that have incredible resiliency through fire and earthquakes. So there's creative ways to look at this and creative ways to get funding. You know, that happens to be through a nonprofit and people apply and, you know, there's a vetting process for them to live in these homes. And they build 10 or 12 a year of these things out there.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to close that item and we're going to go on to the discussion of City of Ojai Design Guidelines. If you'd like to stay, be, be our guests. If you'd like to take off because we've done about all we can to shred this topic, then feel free to take off.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll take a five-minute break to let everything sort itself out. That was a hint right there.
Area from nineteen eighty-three, the statement of theme, which is relatively simple, does not have the level of detail of the other design guidelines. So when you're looking at that, as I think what we're recommending is that these properties here would be subject to just the architecture, the Plaza architectural design guidelines. That seems to make sense is that would be what applies.
And the storefront?
Storefront, absolutely, we're not proposing to touch. So in a sense, those two guidelines work in conjunction, but that really deals with just the face of the arcade. The purple area is that area that I believe came up in a November twenty-seventeen council discussion about would you want to expand these eastward to this property rather than include it in the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines? Right now, those properties in purple are subject to both guidelines. They're within two of them.
The first purple is the school district though, right?
The big, the large rectangle and this is-
District is the first couple-
Is, is, yeah.
Skate park is there also.
And the skate park is over here. I think you have some gaps and then some freestanding buildings on the corners you get to drown.
And that, that first piece, of course, the front side of it, the bottom on the map here, is now landmarked.
Right.
Balance of it is not, and I-
Correct.
I am-
Right, the frontage only.
Split.
Right.
There's gonna be something, not landmark stuff-
Right.
On the back part of that property.
Right. You know, and I think the fundamental difference, a lot of the guidelines, I mean, I find it interesting that there's so many different guidelines for this small area and a lot of them, they don't say wildly different things.
Yeah.
You know, and that, so-
There's some repetition, yeah.
A lot of repetition and I, I know staff recommendation that I'd recommended in November is we leave this issue because it's not really a big issue we're dealing with. These guidelines have been in place for a while, which is why I think we just settled for, let's just clean it up. We know this is something that gets revisited with the general plan and I think depending on where the boundaries fall for a future historic district, if that's in place, that's really gonna define how you want it to reach the downtown. The major, and I don't have it in front of me, but when I look at the Ojai Plaza Guidelines for the area in light blue, extending that eastward, the, the primary theme of that, it says on the first couple pages, is it really values and prioritizes the mission-style architecture, which is why they're architectural design guidelines versus East Ojai, the area in green, while they have a lot of similarities and overlap, East Ojai recognizes eclectic building styles and is focused more on walkability. Um, it's not as rigid and as focused, so my own thought is like when I come into Ojai and I see, again, you've got the post office, the tower, the arcade, the park across the street and the pergola, that's very defining. So the only question I would have whether the area in purple would be subject to East Ojai or Arcade Plaza is, do you foresee that style of architecture, sort of mission? You know, the mission-style architecture being the driver for the future development of that site, is that something of paramount concern to you? So in a lot of ways, looking at it today, the East Ojai Guidelines almost make more sense. Now I realize you have a landmark frontage on the school district.
And that, and that establishes really the, the primary visual impact of that first big piece of property anyway.
Right.
And, and that's why my thought would be that the East End Guidelines are more appropriate because they would allow for craftsmen or-
Correct.
Mission revival or whatever in the back part, which is not really gonna be sightlines from Ojai Avenue anyway.
Right, and I, and I think too, is when I look at an aerial which I don't have here, a lot of that, especially the properties going northward up towards Aliso Street and that, they may redevelop over time, so it's stuff like, is it really more important to keep the mission-style? I mean, yeah, my, my own view is where you have areas of focus, the mission-style defines the key, any visitor to Ojai, that's what jumps out at you. But you could also say you're dissipating the impact of those by having everything look like that. And I mean, I think when you get into Ojai's neighborhoods, you do see, oh, there's a lot of craftsman buildings that are nicely done.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of other styles and that seemed to be more the focus of East Ojai is looking more at establishing a pedestrian nature and what the streetscape should look like and getting the details right on the building regardless of the style.
It's definitely eclectic if you're gonna have cinder block buildings right on Ojai Avenue, which we do.
Yes, you do.
And in that same, that little stretch where you have it marked in purple, I mean, you start with the chaparral and and as you move east, the architect, you know, there's an open lot and what have you in the skate park and then the architecture, I mean, it changes. So, and then you get that eclectic mix, so I tend to agree with Commissioner Pelosi that the East End Guidelines cover the existing architecture of the chaparral building, which may, you know, get the historical designation or there may be more to that, but it gives you the flexibility.
Well, that building in front, it's already landmarked whether-
Yeah, it is, so it's-
Whether it becomes part of a historic district or not is-
Or not, right.
It's already landmarked.
You're just, you're, you're a little more flexible, so, I mean, you're, you still have the essence of what's going on in the downtown core, meaning the arcade and the Arcade Plaza. Can be carried over, but you can have a little-
And the theme is still there, even Azu is, you know, similar, similar kind of architectural treatment.
Right, it's not precluding doing that, but it's not mandating that you have to. And that, that's, that was the one advantage I saw as I thought the East Ojai Guidelines, cause you do see a change as you go eastward from Montgomery. And, and I don't know that that's a bad thing, because if you're trying to just keep repeating that core area on each block, is, is that really a goal? It's kind of a theme park is my view.
And, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, there are some buildings as you start heading east on either side of the, you know, north or south of Ojai Avenue that, you know, kind of, like, they've gone a little too far and it does look like a movie set, in my opinion. But, you know, I hate to have everyone be forced into pushing that and not have a really good design and have it diluted.
Yeah, it's sort of-
I don't want to go there. And something else that you brought up too, that I think is really important, that the East End Guideline talks about the street application and the walkability and despite the fact that you may have different styles of architecture, the streetscape can be that common thread that gives you that continuity. So, you know, even if it's, if it's street trees or something like, you know, on the exterior, you can still have that connection. And at the same time, I, you know, I always think that, um, I don't want either the east or the west, which doesn't have anything, and I'm hoping, I know I, we can't do that necessarily tonight, but at some point I would like to see our entire commercial district fall under some sort of the, you know, guidelines. I, I mean, we can't do it tonight, it's not, we're gonna wait to do that.
Yeah, I think that was the intent, but I think all-
That would be a major change, yeah.
It's a major change, but I would like to see it, and once again, going west, it's almost, you could almost use the East End Guidelines. And it could be the East and West Guidelines, because you have, now, once again, you have that, um, kind of eclectic mix. I'm potentially just throwing that out.
Yeah, and it is more of a, it's more of a corridor guideline than the downtown. I mean, I look at that, it's kind of a corridor guideline.
You can call it that.
Yeah.
And it starts here and it starts there.
Yeah, whereas the plaza and that very core area spreads off of the street.
There's the core and then there's the corridor.
Right.
Correct, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, and I also think, I mean, I'm talking, I know this is future, but I would love it if we could see almost, um, you know, a master guideline, like a general theme for the entire city, and then under that could be the separate guidelines for those specific areas, but keep it simple, you know, maybe we, we only have, you know, three, we have the-
It would, it would cut down on the amount of paper.
Right.
For starters.
But there's that general, um, theme that maybe the, almost like what the redevelopment was kind of trying to do, but didn't go into too much detail. But it's kind of an overall master.
Yeah, I would hope as we get into the general plan, we consolidate, I mean-
Yep.
Oh, the scale of Ojai, it is fairly uniform. You have a defined city center and I know a lot of the, the Sargent Town planning effort that you may have looked at, they were identifying that too.
Yeah.
And I would think it would be better served in a, a single document where somebody can come in, yeah, again, the, the Ojai Avenue Corridor, it's the Ojai Avenue Corridor, it reaches a center and East and West have a lot of similarities. There isn't a particular style, but there is a defined scale. And I think there's definitely a focus through whether it's the ATP grant and complete streets to try to really get the streetscape modified, and that ends up being the unifier.
Exactly.
So that was the thinking.
Things like the Topa Mountain Winery, that is alre- already more or less abiding by the East End Guidelines.
Right.
On the West End.
Yeah, if you move that to the East End, it would not look out of place.
Just change the name. Maybe there's a couple minor modifications or not, but, yeah.
But that was the thinking, I mean, this was kind of the quick get it cleaned up, because yeah, it is a little silly that some of them, particularly the Chevron Station, was subject to three different design guidelines.
And I, I'm not sure, having, having read all of it and I, I, I know I, I was kind of defeated by, by the repetition in places. But how, how different is the redevelopment statement of, redevelopment area statement of theme different from the Plaza?
I don't think it is very much. I think the, the Plaza expanded on it and it was actually a redevelopment-based guideline to try to, you know, create something in that area, but yeah.
So I, I wouldn't object if we just, there are a couple of things and I'll come to it when we get to some details here. Like, like the redevelopment area statement of theme talks about awnings. The-
Right.
Municipal code does not. It talks about awning signs, but it doesn't define what an awning is or say where you can have them.
That's why they're guidelines. That's where guidelines differ from the code, is you're not trying to create, you already have a code and guidelines should be focused more on you should rather than thou shall.
Yeah.
And, but you're right, in terms of like colors, materials, scale.
Yeah.
Right.
Getting activity at the street, that's where guidelines really help to implement your general plan in a way zoning often doesn't.
Okay, well, it's, it's kind of tough here to, to think. How much, how much change can we recommend City Council consider right now? But if I had my brothers, I would say, let us dispense with the redevelopment area statement of theme and apply the Arcade Plaza standards to the area that's in dark blue. And apply the, you said yellow, I can't tell, it looks kind of yellowish-green to me. Apply those standards to the purple area and extend those standards to cover all commercial property from Ventura Street to the Y, all commercial property. And then, then we would have a theme. And, and we would only really have two different design guidelines. One for the city core and one for the corridor.
Right, so in other words, the light blue area would cover the entire area shown in blue. The darker blue would go away, it would all be light blue, it would all be Arcade Plaza.
The purple would become yellow or green.
Right.
And from Ventura West to the Y, the commercial property would also be green.
So it would essentially be the-
Maybe even all commercial-
Maybe even the Y.
To the tail rotor. But you know what, the part where I'm concerned would be the taking the Arcade Guidelines, putting them in where the blue, the darker blue is.
Yeah, there's a lot of-
That's not necessarily, in my opinion, gonna work.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh-
Well, you've got a lot of residential property on the north end of that there.
Structures throughout there that I-
Yeah, because you get back to the, the architectural style mandate doesn't work.
Work there, yeah.
And that's, that's the biggest hangup with that, is the, the Arcade Plaza Guidelines were very focused on the arcade part and keeping that theme going.
I mean, this is, this is just a for now kind of thing.
Very much so.
And, um, so I, I really appreciate staff sorting through this, by the way.
Yeah, you did a great job.
And coming up with this.
Yeah, that was great.
You know, I was reading, I was trying to put it straight in my head, I'm reading the design guidelines, I'm like, oh gosh, you know, so you sifted through a lot of, um, a lot of pages and kind of when I saw this, then it was like, it made a lot of sense. And I thought it was a really, uh, kind of the heart of the matter, simple approach and, um, so I think I would be more inclined, because I, I think there's a lot of buildings that, that mission revival stuff might not work real well.
Well, first of all, does, do these guidelines apply to new construction and remodel?
Yes.
They're not retroactive to what's there.
Right.
Everything, everything in town is grandfathered as we start.
Right, but do you want everything going to mission revi- I mean, it's not gonna, nothing's gonna be, it's not gonna be rebuilt wholesale, but-
Use our corridor, which would be the East End one, but almost worked. If, let's just say if we did get rid of the Ojai redevelopment-
Well, the East End thing talks about space, larger properties and spaces between.
And that doesn't apply to the top part of the dark blue, yeah.
Unless there was some sort of a, a hybrid.
And I think it also is the whole, the quick fix approach, for lack of a better term, is that was why we kind of landed where we did.
Yeah, and I think the idea of adding another quarter and making, extending it out on the side might really, for now, for now, it's, uh, it just makes a lot of sense.
I know, I would, I would be for that.
I, I do have some other questions though. Where are we here? So these do apply to new development and remodeling only, that's, that's good. I think that the residential lots on Fulton and Olive Mill should not be in the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines. That is all strictly small lot residential.
Yeah.
So that would be one thing I would recommend. Is that, that you leave, it, it's not commercial property for starters.
And it has no frontage on Ojai Avenue either, so, right.
It has no frontage on Ojai Avenue. Okay, so that's a suggestion I would make. Uh, the same applies to the properties along the south side, the same thought applies for me. The properties along the south side of Ojai Avenue on either side of Fairway over to Gridley.
That's all, yeah.
It's all residential.
Right.
I mean, somebody may turn one of those things into a bed and breakfast, but they're not gonna remodel the building into being something that, that, i-if it doesn't already fit in the definition, well, eclectic means you can do whatever you please.
Right.
But I don't understand why that's in the East End Guidelines, because those are not commercial properties. Or if they are commercial properties, why are they, why are they being used as residential?
No, they are, they are zoned residential as well.
Yeah, so I, I would-
It must have this continuity as you-
Yeah, well-
Yeah.
But that's, but it's so eclectic anyway that-
Yeah.
If it's residential, I-
I don't think so.
These are commercial-
I think it's a commercial.
Guidelines.
Um, also Vine Street. That, that little piece of North-South Road on the west side of the fire station that runs across the golf course. That confuses me. You see, you see the street there.
Yes, I do.
The street does not exist.
Right.
Because the, the lower eighty-five percent of it is on the golf course.
Right. Yeah, and I don't know why, like, why those properties were included. I think it was just because it applied to the corridor. Or somebody could have been looking ahead to, again, future development.
Corridor, but it's not commercial, yeah.
And that's, if it's gonna stay residentially designated, then
Yeah.
you're not really applying the guidelines anyway.
For the, for the same reason, I would recommend that if we move west of Ventura, that we talk about the guidelines applying to commercial property. Now that takes in all of those former residences that are on the south side of Ojai Avenue.
That are now businesses.
West of Topa Topa that are now businesses. If they're redeveloped, then-
They're zoned commercial.
Then they're zoned commercial, and if they're redeveloped, then they would be subject to these guidelines.
Correct.
And I don't know, and the, the eclectic nature of the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines right now is welcome in one sense, but it doesn't include late forties, early fifties residential style. And so this would, this would mean those commercial properties, if redeveloped, would probably change in some fashion.
Well, and also with, with guidelines, they are guidelines, like a lot of times we find ourselves having to, if it doesn't fit, you need to explain that in the staff report, why it doesn't fit. Like even when we had, say, the yoga studio with the gas station and all the pedestrian orientation, well, the architecture of the building almost defeats in the purest sense, it's a gas station and the canopy's still up. Anyone looking at it's gonna say it's a gas station, but realize there's no pumps, so you can't get gas there. But you've adaptively reused the building, you are trying to make it fit the streetscape, but-
Yeah.
But it-
We could add a little language if we needed to, if we decided, but I, I think it's a-
Yeah, and I just think for, for now, I think that's where I'm going. In the future, we recognize we do need to improve the, the actual wording and intent of the guidelines and probably make it focus more on things like streetscape, walkability.
Right.
What, what do you want to do? Like, the public realm is what's gonna unify that.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, that, that's what unifies cities. I mean, very often I think of Main Streets I really like and you look at the buildings individually and none of the architecture is stellar. I mean, University Avenue in Palo Alto, I used to work there and I'd look at it, it was so vibrant and there were a couple buildings that stood out, but not much. It was the streetscape, it was the sycamore trees, it was all those other things and the people
Right.
that unified the street.
Town and Country Shopping Center was a pretty nice place.
And it's still there.
Yeah.
The others have all pretty much gone, because there were four of those. Yeah, but that's where I think the guidelines, that, that they make a difference though, is trying to, despite the architectural styles and the time periods, you know, things should be true to their style rather than mandating a particular style.
I think so too. This is nothing worse than trying to force something and-
Yeah, I, I just, on a personal level, I get a little like, when, when people think of just the arcade and that area, of course, that identifies your city. And that's all the more reason not to keep trying to build it everywhere.
Right, and, um, I hate, well, I don't know if I should say this, thank you, I don't know if I should say this, but, um, yeah, I got to a point where there were, it looked like several Taco Bells were going in. You know, while you're like, you're just like trying to force that style of architecture. And, and you, you need a sense of hierarchy in the arcade and the, the post office, you know, there's certain buildings that kind of give that sense of hierarchy, but if you, if you keep duplicating those or trying to duplicate them somewhere else, you lose that, um, it just becomes diluted, in my opinion.
Dealing with historic preservation, if you're adding onto a landmark or building there when you don't try to replicate, you may, you want the scale right, you may want the materials right, but you don't wanna mimic-
Exactly.
To get that sort of false sense of, of history.
Mimic anything else that happens to be.
Yeah, my own view is when I just look at that purple area is, I don't see that as being an extension of the arcade.
It's not, yeah.
No, the East End I think applies much better there. And we should be prepared maybe for something different on the back of the school property than we have on the front of the school property.
Yeah, I could see the bottom quarter of the school property being the dark blue and that ties it in with the arcade.
It's already landmarked and it, and the architecture is there, yeah.
But, and visually, that bottom quarter is dark blue and the rest-
I'm, I'm wondering, the, the dark blue areas that are on the south side of Ojai Avenue, how different are they from the East Ojai Avenue Guidelines? I guess they're smaller, smaller plots, huh?
So those are the storefronts and Libby Park and that's actually the post office too even.
Yeah, it includes the post office.
The post office is there. There's the old Bank of America building that's there. Where, you know, there's, what, not Julia Rose, I, I guess Julia Rose is there too, right?
Yeah, that's over by Azu.
And the coffee roaster and all of that stuff.
It's, uh, right.
Yeah, Azu, the new Topa.
Are the guidelines in the redevelopment area statement of theme that different from the East Ojai Avenue Guidelines? I didn't, I didn't feel like they were. With, with the exception of the eclectic nature, but I think we have that now.
Yeah, I don't think they're all, that, that, they're, none of them are that terribly different.
One, one important thing that we do deal with at the counter is the awning signs. And in the East End Design Guidelines, there's nothing but the redevelopment, you can't have an awning sign. And so if you took that out, then on all the awnings-
Giorgio's had awning signs though, didn't it?
Yeah, cause there's no, because it wasn't in the blue.
Yeah, it wasn't in that area. So that gets back to, it would be important to maintain that consistency, at least for now, I think. Yeah, leave it for now, maybe.
Yeah.
And that's probably like, we are focused, I think, much more on, on sort of the quick fix, that if we wanna start making changes, there's, there's not gonna be a lot, there's a heck of a lot of overlap.
Right.
I mean, you almost feel like you're reading the same thing in some places, and you are.
You are.
But there are a few differences and like, that would be a good, a good one to differentiate the two.
Okay.
So maybe we-
Well, if, if we, if we got rid of the residential lots around Fulton and Olive Mill and the residential lots around Fairway to, to, uh-
To Gridley.
To Gridley.
That would be good.
And then, and then made the purple yellow or green, whichever one you said it was.
But under the, oh, the Avenue Guidelines.
And, and then extend the same guidelines, call them corridor guide, Ojai Avenue Corridor.
Ojai Avenue.
Guidelines.
Give it a new name.
Extend those west at least to the Y.
Y.
If not to El Roblar.
If-
Well, that's the school.
There's commercial property.
You could take in the, uh-
Yeah, Dean Vadney's, the, the Ben Franklin Center is grandfathered because it's already there.
Right, and then I guess it's all medical, pretty much on the other side, gas station. But would you take it all the way?
Up, up thirty-three?
No, ended at Kuyama thirty-three.
The Vaughn Shopping Center is already a compatible style.
No, but I'm just saying like down the road, let's just say they sold it and somebody, a new person bought it and they wanted to do something to it. And then, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out as a question.
Where that little house is that, where the psychic is, like-
That's Ojai Avenue.
That's, that's pure nineteen fifties.
We're talking about going up the thirty-
But that's probably commercially zoned.
It is commercially zoned, yeah.
Yeah.
So would the guidelines would apply if they made a change?
If they redeveloped that property, the guidelines would apply.
If we took it all the way up.
And they would apply to that, to that empty space.
Take it all the way out there, cause I wouldn't wanna force new owners of that building.
Would apply to Boku, the Boku site, um, I mean, if that were-
Boku's grandfathered too, yeah.
Well, no, if somebody came in and, uh, you know, a new, a new tenant wanted to make changes, it would, you know, it's nice to have something that would-
So basically you can't base your decision-making on. So like the psychic place, let's say a new owner bought it and they wanted to just keep it the way it is, they can, I mean, there's that, there's greater flexibility with the, if we call it the corridor or what was known, well, actually is known as the East End Guidelines. There's plenty of flexibility.
Reversing it in my mind, I-
Yeah, so we wanna give the flexibility.
Extend the blue that way.
No, no.
Extend the yellow.
Like, take the yellow and put that on the other end as well.
So you have these two arms.
For all the commercial properties. So we're not, yeah.
Ojai.
I'm ready to flip that.
We're not, we're not messing with the school property
Right.
or the real estate office on the corner of Country Club. Cause it, all that stuff's already there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Potentially.
But there's a lot of empty space along the south side of Ojai Avenue.
Right.
Between Topa Mountain Winery and Country Club Drive. And of course, the inn owns it, they may or may not decide to develop it, but it would be nice to have some design guidelines if they did.
Right, right.
Yes.
I agree with you.
Mm-hmm.
But at this point, I think stopping at-
At the Y?
At the Y would be enough. I mean, at least we've gotten rid of the, the overlapping guidelines, which was the basic catalyst for this.
And there's, there is a commercial piece of property on the north side of the street between El Paseo and Del Norte, or, uh, yeah, between El Paseo and Del Norte. It's currently a residence, but I understand it's zoned commercial.
It's a kind of a white, it's a residential house.
You can actually see the place now.
People bought that and they had to resell it because they couldn't do what they wanted to do there.
Oh, okay.
But I think-
Yeah.
I think we would want to include that. If it's redeveloped, we'd like to, to have some design guidelines that apply to it.
Yeah, it, no, it makes a lot of sense what you're talking about, yes.
I'm a bit challenged with having, uh, Signal be part of the statement of theme up like where Nosovita is and, and the store next to it. You know, on Signal just north of Matilla Hut.
That's what they're subject to now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they already were-
Yeah, that's, that's existing.
They're subject to the redevelopment statement of theme now.
Go through that already with their, anything they did.
If someone else comes in and wants to change- Someone else comes in and wants to change it.
Well, they did make a change a couple years ago, and they, they had to comply with those guidelines, right?
Right, so for now, so we're saying for now, if we left it, and then, when the general plan comes up, we could.
Yeah, I think there's a recognition, we need to do more than we're talking about tonight.
And, and the, the southeast, southwest corner of Eliseau and Signal. Is a multifamily structure, and it's residential.
You have the apartment building there?
Well, it's, it's a residence that has at least two front doors with different addresses. There may be three, I'm not sure.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we've, we've gotta do something with the VMU at some point, too, 'cause that's really crazy.
Isn't it with city council, aren't they looking at?
I hope so.
It is, in terms of, yeah, like, where, it's more where it would be found in the code. Than necessarily changing. The district, um, but I get, there's a recognition to, like, the redevelopment guidelines did affect residential properties as well, so it, it was kind of.
So if that residence was redeveloped, it would be subject to the.
Yes, sure.
It would be subject to the paint colors and the signage and all sorts of stuff.
Right, so if you wanted an exception from that, that would be called out, seeing the staff report before you that it's not complying.
I did, I did notice on the second page, this attachment E, page two of six. Where it's talking about signage, it starts by saying signage should conform to the sign ordinance. Except no plastic interlit signs or temporary paper signs are permitted. I think, I think the last part of that's already in the ordinance anyway.
It is now, it just, they gave, are those the redevelopment guidelines?
Yeah, this is the redevelopment.
Yeah, they're.
They have some older things in there. I know, yeah. They have like Bowmanite pattern.
I'd really like, I'd really like to see some work done on that statement of theme, 'cause it. It is, it's more out of date than the rest, for sure.
It's probably outlived its life, also redevelopment statement of theme, we don't even have redevelopment. So I, I, I think that's, again, there's an acknowledgement that. As we move other things forward, namely the general plan, that.
It will get.
All of that should be revisited to get it current. Even having a redevelopment design guideline is kind of silly at this point, just, it should be more like a downtown design guideline or something.
Exactly.
And if we do what I suggested and, and apply the corridor guidelines, let's call them. To the commercial property west of Ventura. That does not apply to the current World University property, 'cause that's not commercial.
World, it is PL, but also.
Not commercial.
Also on Mati, fronts on Matilla. The World University property, not.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Well, the, the large part of the blue, the dark blue area fronts on Matilla.
Right. But that's also.
The World University property has no color at the moment.
Right, it's not subject to any design guidelines.
Right.
It's on the other side of the street.
And if we extended the corridor guidelines to it, it still wouldn't be.
Right, because it's too far north.
Yeah, it's facing Ventura Street.
No, because it's not commercial.
Oh, because it's.
Well.
Well, that brings up a question, I mean, would we just do, which, how far back from Ojai Avenue would?
I was assuming frontage.
Just the frontage.
That's what I was, to mimic sort of what you have in the east. 'Cause to pull that in, I mean, that takes access off of Matilla, so you'd be pulling in.
Right.
A block, and again, is.
Just the parcels that front on Ojai Avenue.
And not jumping the general plan discussion, I think a lot of those parcels are gonna end up getting re-designated, and probably. Some cases even before the general plan, because you may have activity, and the public, quasi-public on that lot does not make any sense.
Yeah.
And I don't think the commercial is the key that you're talking about, because the property you were just talking about, ten-ten West Ojai Avenue, that the key's owned. That's a PL as well, on Ojai Avenue.
The one between El Paseo and Del Norte?
Oh, that's PL also, oh, okay.
Or BP.
Well, BP is what, professional office, so to me, that's a commercial zoning designation.
Over the back map, yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't wanna overcomplicate this.
This map doesn't extend that far.
This one will have it.
Yeah, it's just, are you in the boundary or not? I think if they're fronting the corridor, the frontage is what I think drives that.
It's dark blue, BP, oh, BP, it's not commercial.
Well, it's profession, it's an office designation, it, it, it's a different category.
Business professional or something?
Yeah, so think of like CPA office chiropractor, or something like that, it's still a commercial, it's not retail. It's not a restaurant. But it is targeted for a commercial use.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I just noticed in this, in this redevelopment statement of theme. It says on page two, only one sign per store entrance is permitted. That's inconsistent with, con, conformed to the sign ordinance. Because ten-two sixteen oh-seven G says something different.
Right.
So.
You know, and guidelines don't necessarily have to follow.
Guidelines say conform, but the specifics of the guidelines say something different.
Right, and in that case, the guidelines would, because they are more specific, would trump the zoning.
Yeah, now, I did have an, uh, City of Ojai development area, this little map here.
Right.
Has, has big chunks marked A and B. B, I understand, it's from Country Club west to about Boku or so.
Right, I think that's just the redevelopment project areas, which are now not in effect at all.
But, okay, okay, yeah, because it, it doesn't talk about the south side of Ojai Avenue. East, east of Bryant much either, so. We don't really have a redevelopment area because we don't have a redevelopment agency.
Right, it's seven years.
Only a successor agency that seems to do little financial things every month.
Yeah, you're just essentially winding down, yeah, the financial obligations from the redevelopment agency.
Yeah, I liked the pictures that were in the East End thing. About East End, East Ojai Avenue, is that what? East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines, those are mostly not from Ojai, though. One I recognize is Ojai. The, um, page thirteen, or page seven of the, of the guidelines, but it's page thirteen of fifty-one. The top picture there is in fact on East Ojai Avenue. That nine-four-two, that's Ojai door and window. And they have awnings. The other one I don't think is from Ojai, I don't know where.
Well, some of they just use typical kind of photo imagery to. Can be the concept.
Um, I noticed page twenty-three of fifty-one, it said discouraging. Strongly discouraging use of river rock. But that seems like it's part and parcel of, of the, the craftsman style.
It is, and I don't, I don't know the exact context of why that is used.
Yeah, river rock is so Ojai.
And it is very much in a craftsman.
All these stone walls you see around town, that's all river rock.
Right here it says rockwork encouraged.
Uh, local fieldstone is recommended.
'Cause that's more native.
But use of river rock is strongly discouraged, thought that was kind of odd.
River rock in Ventura.
What else did I have?
But we're not gonna get into the details on this.
Yeah, I sure hope not.
There'll be a lot more questions.
Are you, you're just looking for us and for a recommendation or motion?
For, I think a recommendation to council, really, on, on the three issues that we had, is the. Getting the property subject to one guideline, what's the strategy for doing that, which I think you've laid out. If there's consensus on that in terms of. Essentially making it not just East Ojai Avenue, but Ojai Avenue. Applying it to the purple area instead of the Arcade Plaza guidelines.
Right.
And then the blue areas would essentially remain the same, for now.
So you will have to explain.
Yes.
The East Ojai Avenue applying now to the, uh.
It'll be the Ojai Avenue corridor design guidelines.
Right.
Right.
But there isn't, there, there are entries to town from both directions.
First blush, it's gonna look, it's gonna look maybe wrong, but.
Yes, but I think that was.
It's explainable and, uh.
It is, yeah, very much explainable, and I, I think.
Makes sense.
They're your entry points towards your downtown, and they're not that dissimilar when you're driving in. That's, there's a commercial corridor leading you into the center of the city. So, um, but I.
I'd like to see those, those lots in two places excluded from the East Ojai Avenue, or the Ojai Avenue corridor design guidelines.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense too, I'm glad you pointed that out.
They're not commercial or BP or PL or anything.
And not likely to, to be.
Right.
But yeah, I think that since the council wanted direction on the west of Ventura. And getting the properties, you know, under one, it was really three things, west of Ventura. Clean up the properties and then the purple area, and I think you've touched on all three of those, and that was what the council was looking for.
Again, my, my compliments to you and the staff.
Yeah, thank you for sorting me very much.
Because it became, the, the, the process of coming up with a recommendation. Just boggled my mind, having read the detail of all these design guidelines.
No, it's a matter of distilling, how do you take a lot and reduce it?
Well, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Me too.
Me too, three.
Me four.
Me four. Okay, well, I'm gonna go sit over there.
Okay. So do we, do we need to? Pass a motion to recommend to the city council these things, or are we good enough with this?
My only concern would be if there isn't consensus, but it sounds like.
I sense a definite consensus here.
I do too, and that's, so I think it, it, clearly the discussion to me. We seem to arrive at and agree that, on what you wanted on the three points, so I think that is adequate.
As long as we get that, if we can get that, those three or four points documented in the minutes, so that, that they go through to, uh, city council. I think we're good.
We're good, it's a sensible consensus.
It is very, yeah.
A conceptual breakthrough. We agreed on something, okay, uh, let's go to item four then, director decisions. I just had one question, and that was on the second page of director decisions. This, um, March fifteenth, Andrew Bombard, what is a pre-application conference? Was there a request made that was granted or not granted?
And I'm not recognizing the name of Andrew Bombard, I don't know if you know Sherry?
It's miscellaneous second entry.
Yeah, they, um, flew in from New York, were interested in five-ten East Hill Avenue, and there's. A, a process that we call pre-application conference application. So the application is to meet with the planner for an hour.
Oh.
Hour and a half, whatever, with their, and they pay a fee to meet with her after they've submitted the application.
You're recouping essentially staff time to get a more detailed answer.
They're just paying for staff time for an hour or two.
Yeah, and they.
Okay.
And the staff is able to gather everything to explain what they need to submit an application. And then we have a, on that pre-application, there's a choice, if you'd rather pay the next amount, that's in our fee schedule. You could have Public Works, the Fire Department, the Building Department, everybody meet, multi.
It's sort of going beyond what you'd get if you just walked into the counter and had basic questions, it's that, that going to the next level.
That's, that's the user-friendly kind of thing.
Yeah, because a lot of projects, I think some people have basic inquiries, some people have much more specific inquiries. That you wanna make sure you're getting them the right information, and it obviously takes more time, and may involve more staff.
Any other questions on this item?
How many, how many outdoor dining seats did we approve, just curious, roughly? On, uh, the Ojai Pub, and are they going to be on the sidewalk?
Okay, is that the one on East Ojai? It was very small, 'cause I know they have a tiny frontage.
Yeah, right.
And a pretty narrow sidewalk, too, where it was, I wanna say it was two tables and. Yeah, it was, it was small.
Something like what Giorgio's had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the same building.
Right.
I thought Giorgio's was, uh, where the nest is now.
No, that was El Giordino or something.
Oh, El Giordino, right, right, right.
I have a, I have a question, Luke, is there a, um. Increase in the number of requests to remove oaks?
I'd say yes, there are, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm very, uh, well, every time.
No, it's, it's a good point.
Every time, I, I think we really need to relook at the tree ordinance and, uh. Uh, we need, okay, an arborist needs to write their report, but the arborist report. That's out in the field, needs to be subject to peer review, they need to be subject to a second review. Especially when we're talking about removing valley oaks, and, and by the way, what's hazardous anyway, you know?
That is an issue we have to wrestle with. And, and I, in the time I've been here, I, I, it has increased. And I don't, some of this may be legitimate infestation with the beetles that have been on the drought, the heat wave in July, there's a lot of factors, but. I would agree that in terms of. At least getting more oversight on replacement. And actually more tightly defining, because I, I've been having individual discussions with arborists about. Some do a very thorough job and substantiate the work.
We need a peer review, we need a, if we don't have a city arborist who's appointed.
And we do not.
Then we need a peer review system.
Yep, so, but I, I think this is an issue that, in terms of how we're handling tree removal overall, 'cause. The thing with the hazardous designation is it can be vague and it doesn't require mitigation. So if your tree's deemed hazardous, you can take it out, where I've seen in other jurisdictions. Your tree may be legitimately hazardous, but you're still mitigating, whether it's on your site or somewhere else, or paying into a fund. To get, so you're not, you're not having a net loss of your tree canopy.
Right, right.
That is what I, we don't have that, and, but I would like to see something like that.
So I, I just a comment on that, um, because I've been active and was one of the co-creators of the Tree Committee, which. You know, isn't it, it's not a true commission, um. Professionals and members of the public are, um, make up the committee, but we've collaborated with the city for. I shouldn't, and, that's not the right word, we've kind of acted as an advisory board, and I know it's kind of gone up and down, and. There's been some city councils that have, you know, actually asked us to do, we did like the Community Forest Management Plan, we produced that document. Along with, um, our planner at the time, which was a huge document, got it, and city council approved it. And then there's been other things, but I, and I think this has to come from city council, and I know that our tree ordinance was changed, well, I guess that was. Two years ago, maybe two, two and a half years ago. And, um, I am completely in support of, of invasive species not being covered on it. But what they do is they can, they change it so that everything except for the native plants are now, can come out. Whereas in the past, they were actually protected, and if it was over a certain size, you would have to get a permit to take it out. I'm not saying that we can't look at that and massage that somewhat, but basically what's happened is more trees are now being removed. Of course, the oaks have already always been protected, and they are. But then, and there's no mitigation, and I think, and I even talked to a couple of my commercial clients at the time, a couple of years ago when that first happened, I said, look. Okay, now you can come in and you can take out, yeah, you can take out fifty trees, they're not protected anymore. Would you be willing to, and I was just kind of posing this question. Pay a, and it could be a small, but a mitigation fee for those removals. So it goes back into a tree fund, so that we can manage our community forest, and so not clearing it out, and then you, you start, you don't have that diverse age. Group of trees, and I talked to like three clients at the time, and they all said yes, now whether or not they would do that, that was just kind of an off-the-cuff type thing, because I was working for them. I think we need to look, go back and look at our, um, this is personally, the tree ordinance. And then another thing we'd look, we've looked at over the years at the Tree Committee, but then we, you know, we're not getting traction with it, is that. Something that Commissioner Lottis just brought up. So if you have to take out a tree or the quality of the tree report that comes in. There needs to be a set of guidelines, and we kind of worked on some things, but they, they just kind of died in the, the process. So it, I'm not sure if it's, it sounds like city council is maybe the body that needs to direct. Whether it's the Planning Commission or the Tree Committee or a combination thereof, this is my personal opinion again. I think it needs to be tightened up, and there's a way to do it, and we've done some preliminary work. I think it's crucial, I mean, the trees, as we well know, affect the hydrology, they affect carbon sequestration, they affect the evapotranspiration rate. the evapotranspiration rate. I know there's this kind of move with some people, don't plant any trees right now. I would say take out all the lawns and plant more trees, because you're, the, the benefits are so great, and people keep saying, oh, we live in a desert. Well, technically, we do not live in a desert. But if you continue to let all the trees die, and you start changing the landscape, you can create a desert. And that's what actually has happened in certain places across the planet over the years, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not jumping ahead, but I'm just, I'm going to, and, um, I do have an item I want to add to the joint meeting. So I, uh, which is regarding a work program, that we need to have a, a work program, work program with specific projects listed that have to do with, so, so the planning department deals with, um, code enforcement, and as Luke told me at one point, it's like, what, what's the workload on code? Ninety percent of the workload or something?
It's high. I mean, I, I kind of look at, everybody's a code enforcement officer to some degree, which is where a lot of the time goes.
Enforcement. We spend time on development review, but that is associated with remodels or new development. But the other part of the work that a planning department needs to be doing is, uh, more advanced planning, or, or things where we're, we're dealing with new ordinances or making modifications to ordinances. We're looking at uses in different kinds of zones and making those adjustments, and just on and on. And, and when you have, unless you have a work program, none of this is, is thought through. You can't, you need to decide, okay, what are the things that are important to us, that we want to work on over the next couple of years? And you can prioritize them. And when they're written down, everybody's aware that these are things that the planning department needs to work on, and, and you want to allocate some resources to that. And when, when you have, so when something comes out of the blue from council request or whatever, the staff at least says, well, okay, if we're going to work on this, then we can't work on this, these things over here. Or, it, it just helps with a, a, a comprehensive approach to planning, and it helps prioritizing, it helps everybody be aware of, oh yeah, we do want the tree awareness, that's really important, or we want.
Managing the expectations.
Exactly, and with the resources that we have. And with the resources that we have. So I, I, anyway, I think, I've been thinking about it for a while, and I just think that that's something that we need to talk about with the council, and I would, I would, I would recommend that that be added if.
No, I think it's a great idea. It's what, in other cities, that's very much what I'm used to, that you, in addition to say a fiscal impact being on a council staff report, you would have a where's this in your work program priority. So when you're working in something that isn't.
Right.
Which happens frequently, where something comes up, and it's legitimately, that's the case, but it's letting you know, if something's going through five or six public hearings that wasn't in your work program, those are five or six hearings you're not preparing something else for.
Right.
And I'm just going back to the trees, I, I, I would be happy to see that issue addressed, because I think also in addition to, we talked a lot about design and architecture, the other thing that for me defines Ojai for many communities in Southern California, it's your trees.
Oh yeah, just walk up on Shelf Road and see how many houses you can see. It's not very many.
Yeah, right.
This valley floor is covered with trees outside of the ag area.
Well, Commissioner Nolan's, uh, said that there was some, a study that you were aware of or involved in, where they asked tourists, what's the number, if you had one thing to say that you particularly really liked about Ojai? What was the answer, the response was astounding.
I did this randomly, and it was, I, I had it been twenty years ago. But I, I'd have to go back and look, but I asked, I'm going to say quite a few, but it was like, it could have been over thirty people. It was like on the weekend, if I was like walking on Shelf Road, I invariably meet someone, and a lot of times they were residents of the valley, and a lot of times they were tourists. And we start talking, and, you know, and say, oh yeah, well, what brought you here? Or what, you know, what are some of the things you're passionate about, the valley? And invariably at the top of the list were the trees. And, um, I think it's super important. And as Commissioner, um, uh, Powers mentioned earlier, when we were having that discussion, we were, what were we talking about? Was it, um, carbon seque, maybe I lost my train of thought, it's getting late, but anyway. It was something about, I thought, carbon sequestration.
I was talking about carbon.
Yeah, oh, I know. You mentioned that the Ojai Valley was the, had the second worst, um, air quality. Simi Valley's number one, because we're a valley. We start taking the trees out.
Yeah.
You start losing that carbon sequestration. It's going to get worse, and they're one of our biggest assets.
Yes.
So it's aesthetics, it's beauty, it's shade, it's carbon sequestration, and it's actually transpiration that helps bring moisture. I mean, there's just a litany of.
It's part of our ecotourism to give people a handful of acorns.
Well, there's that too. There you go.
Come to my yard. I have lots of acorns.
All right, let's move on to item five, tentative agenda. Sounds like May fifteenth could be really busy.
What I am expecting on May fifteen.
Just with that one item.
Uh, but I, I have a feeling that May fifteen is going to be another item which, um, our lone member in the public will be presenting.
Yeah.
Um, because I think there's, not that that's trumping anything, but working with the applicant and his schedule, that was either going to have to go soon or wait a while. And I think it was important, that was my decision to try to get that on the agenda for May fifteenth.
You've got new items zoning cleanup. Now, this is, this is cleaning up the language of the, of the municipal code without changing the policies?
Yeah, and I don't know why that's necessarily new, but that was the intent, was just again, doing a cleanup. Emphasis on simple cleanup, things we know should be taken care of.
I think we could push, we could push that off a couple of weeks if necessary. And we don't have anything on June fifth right now.
I can't think off the top of my head. I'm sure there could be something.
Twelve oh two east Ojai Avenue, that's the bowling alley property? Yeah, okay. And, uh, one oh seven north Ventura is the World University property.
Yes, and which I said the, there was an application filed for a conditional use permit. I have met with the applicant on that, and I would expect that the use permit will not be going forward, but we should be seeing a rezoning and a general plan amendment for that site, if not the whole block that is designated PL.
Two dash six says, here are the things you can do with the CUP, here are the things you can do by right, basically. And.
Yeah, we've had conversations.
Doesn't fall into that category.
Right, and I think as I said too, some of that area, it feels commercial, it also feels residential, and it may make a lot of sense for the city to go VMU.
In fact, a residence on that parcel, so.
There is a residence.
There is.
Yeah. The caretaker. Okay. Future meeting with the city council, and all the rest. I really appreciate the way you lay all this out, because we can keep track of.
I cannot take all the credit for that.
And things that other people have to do that we're waiting on.
We thank the entire staff.
Amen.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. This is an organizational construct that, that makes our lives a lot easier. Okay, uh, on to item six, Planning Commission liaison schedule. Uh, we're going to have to modify that because of Mr. Jagiello's departure. Sherry, you can figure that one out. May four, oh, I, you have me down for May fourteenth. I actually have two meetings then to report on, right? The joint meeting with the city council, and then the city council meeting proper. Okay. Anything else? Let's go home.
I was going to make an announcement.
Oh, make an announce, oh, okay. Leave the camera on, make an announcement.
First of all, I want to mention that unfortunately, on the fifteenth, um, I just want to go on public record, I'm going to be absent on the fifteenth. I'm part of the Ojai Youth Opera, and that's right before our performances, so we're full-on in rehearsal mode right before that. And I can't skip out on that. And I'm honored to be a part of that. Tomorrow morning, nine AM, at the. Oak View Resource Center on Mahoney is the Ventura River Watershed Council meeting. Uh, they're very informative meetings, a lot of important topics are spoken about regarding our watershed.
This is, this is the one on Mahoney, you said?
Yeah, five-five-five Mahoney.
Was the elementary school.
It was part of the elementary school, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's the Park and Resource, or Resource Center.
Um, so I just want to, uh. It's at nine AM tomorrow morning?
Nine AM.
Mm-hmm. So I just wanted to inform people, and if you want to learn more about our, our watershed, um, city council members show up, all sorts of policymakers and, um, environmentalists and, and water folks show up, so.
Okay.
I just want to have one real quick co, um, comment. Um, I see that Luke put on, under informational items, we have Planning Commission committee reports and comments, because, um, um, that's new, right? Or was that, that, that's always been there? Oh, okay. Okay.
Did you have some more comments?
No, not tonight, but I, I always felt that there wasn't a place for commissioners to just make some general comments, if it's not related to something specifically already written down.
Good category.
Anyway, I really, I like that, so. Sorry I never saw it before.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.